Okay, couple housekeeping points before we begin the continuation of the public hearing. Number one, once the public hearing is open, I'm going to turn it over to Colleen to give a quick update upon emails, but we have received some more emails. Additionally, I'll just note that at the end of this public hearing, we do have budget deliberations. So in the interest of time, I would encourage those who did not get a chance to speak to come up and speak first. And if you do speak, because the acoustics in this room, as I demonstrated, are not the best, please come up to the great podium up in the front, so the owl can pick you up. So with that. Yes, Brian, can you hear us? There we go. Brian is in the town hall along with our finance director as they are needed to run potential budget scenarios that council may ask for later on tonight.
Loud and clear, Jacob. All set, I can hear you.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved second.
Any discussion? No discussion. I believe we are all in person. I know Counselor Shea will be joining us later, so that. All in favor? The opposed? All right, public hearing is open. I'll go to the room first. Oh, yes.
So, thank you. Thank you again for everybody coming tonight. It's great to see so many people active. These are just additions since Tuesday, as I think it's probably 5:30 today. So additional, one letter to funding suggestions and 12 more letters to support the BOE proposal. 14 plus more letters that do not support the BOE proposal. Two letters regarding the acoustics in the library, three letters regarding the frustration from the April 1st meeting, one letter regarding the exit question of ballot, one letter regarding a board event line items, and then we have a total of three people that are not part of registration list. That came to a total of 113 emails today. We are still getting them in, so, but of course, everyone's letters and emails and obviously people that speak will be in a minute.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll go to the room first. Please state your name and address. Yes. Yeah, actually, I thought the. Yeah, if you could come up to the podium so that the owl can pick you up.
Good evening. My name is Heather McCann and I live at 62 Froston Drive. I'm a parent of two students in the district, a parent leader of the Special Education Advisory Council, a volunteer on a town grant funding committee, the organizer of a monthly food pantry donation program, and an active school volunteer, including offering pizza and snack donations for dances. And I also provided refreshments for all tonight because civic engagement is hard and these meetings can be long and tiring. Like many in this town, we own one modest home with a crumbling foundation, drive modest cars and work hard to meet necessities. I understand sacrifice. I sympathize with those on fixed incomes and I believe our town must provide more truly affordable housing for seniors, empty nesters, fixed income, and first-time home buyers. But tonight I'm here to say one thing clearly, our children must come first. We all benefited from free public education and as adults we give back through taxes. But this isn't just about paying back, it's about investing forward. A well-funded school system doesn't just support students, it strengthens our entire community by preparing future productive citizens. Take our transition program for students with disabilities. It equips them with real-world skills so they can live independently, contribute meaningfully to the community rather than struggle financially. Consider the clubs, programs, and activities in our schools. These aren't just extras, they are critical. They teach teamwork, resilience, financial literacy, and leadership. They provide safe spaces, creative outlets, and real-life skills that resume that like resume building and job interviewing. Cutting corners on education today means paying the price tomorrow and lost opportunities for our children and long-term damage to our town's economy. A well-funded school system protects property values, attracts families, and builds a stronger community. So tonight I urge you, support the current BOE budget request before you and the utilizations of the funds in this that are available. Last night, Dr. Woollett and the BOE offered four, offered a couple of solutions, offered two solutions to achieve what we need to achieve without raising additional taxes. There is a solution before you, please use it. Thank you.
We'll go online. Do we have anyone online who'd like to speak? Okay, we'll go to, well, harder to read than the same, Julie Carey, I think.
Hi, good evening. My name is Juliette Carey. I live at 38 Nedweed Road and I'm the senior class president at Talon High School. Tonight I want to talk about how important clubs and sports are and also just how crucial it is for students to have academic support. I'm a strong believer in keeping extracurriculars at the school. Although I do understand how they are considered extra, however, these clubs and sports offer Talon schools a competitive edge making well-rounded students, which is crucial, especially since Talon doesn't offer nearly enough AP and ECE courses. As well as that, extracurriculars offer students an opportunity to bond with peers they wouldn't normally see or get to know in their day-to-day lives. Students are able to be connected with like-minded individuals who make them feel welcomed, supported, heard, and invaluable. Most importantly though, I am an advocate in keeping support throughout the schools. Birch Grove and TIS have a social worker split between their schools due to the amount of IEPs and FiVO force. However, social workers should be throughout all of our schools. Social workers are critical in supporting students' academic, social, and emotional well-being. They help address possible learning barriers, intervene in crisis, and ultimately promote a positive and inclusive school environment. As well as social workers, academic support in the schools is very important. I could talk about my own struggles, but I am graduating this year and to me it's more important to talk about the future generation that this budget cut will immensely impact. My youngest brother is in first grade and needed reading support, but wasn't able to get it until fairly recently. There are so many students like my brother who need help and haven't even gotten it yet. The main priority should be providing students with the necessary help they need to grow in their academic environments. Overall, I truly understand the frustration coming from all sides. However, I believe there can be at least a somewhat happy medium for all. So I would encourage you to reinstate the requested Board of Education budget proposal. Every student deserves a chance to learn and grow. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go back to the room. Make that on board.
Hi, I'm Rita Malenchuk. I live at 56 Brandon Way. I am Professor of English and Director of the Writing Program at Eastern Connecticut State University. I have held that position for 30 years. I am also the parent of three kids who went through the Talon School System. We moved here in 2020. My kids graduated from THS in 2013, 2015, and 2017. All three did very well academically. All three participated in extracurriculars, including sports. You may think that because I direct a writing program, I'm going to advocate a back-to-basics thing. I am not going to do that. Because writing is a basics, it's not a basic skill. Writing takes a lot of experience from all sorts of different venues, okay? Teamwork, for example, that's taught in business club, that's taught in sports, it's taught in any number of clubs, is often required to write into the business world. Okay, the understanding of how to relate to people is taught in clubs and it also, it also affects writing because writing is about appealing to an audience. Courses, you know, upper-level courses, courses in history, teach critical thinking. All right, many, many of my students said that they knew how to, they learned how to write in their AP government classes. Right, social studies classes teach a lot and to argue for a back-to-basics and cut everything else approach is really, really short-sighted. Also, education is a public good and I think enough people don't see it that way. I know some people, I've heard some people saying, well, my kids aren't in the schools anymore and I don't care. Well, okay, fine, that's fine. But you ought to care because an educated populace makes for intelligent and compassionate decisions in a society. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Farrell on Zoom.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Mark.
Thank you.
Mark Farrell, 112 Sugar Hill Road. I'll be short and quick. We moved here because of the reputation of the schools in Talon. For the last 10 years, I have witnessed this governing body squeeze the school system dry. I find it disgusting how much less our students have today compared to what they've had 10 years ago. I'm a bit numb to the difficulty of the time. We're all dealing with it and we all hear from it every day from everywhere. If we aren't trying to improve, not hold the status quo, but improve the opportunities for the coming generations, what are we even doing? I'm willing to pay a little more for your kids, for mine, for others to come. We'll make it work. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go back to the room.
Hi, my name is Patrick Doyle. I'm with an eight-licky drive extension. And I come here tonight to share my thoughts, just to give you a little bit of background on myself. I currently run a nonprofit in Hartford with $2 million annual budget and serve as Vice Chair of the Board of Education here at Talon. So I have some sense of the budgeting challenges that you all have to manage at these difficult times.
Yeah, she messed up that throne.
Thank you. I also, I also sent an email last night that I'm going to pull from and add to a little bit, but as you consider your final budget, I'm asking that you take a few specific and reasonable actions that I believe can help preserve some meaningful investments that have been made by residents and leaders of Talon, the Talon Public School staff, and many students who have gone through the system, including my son. Specifically, I'd like to ask the Town Council to make the following updates to the budget, to adopt the superintendent's proposal to utilize $380,000 from the USA to offset the cost of power of the Board of Education. I was Chair of the Board of Education's Finance and Facilities Committee when that fund was created and that project was done. This is the exact purpose that that fund was created for. I'm also asking you to adapt the superintendent's proposal to reallocate $188,000 of capital funds initially set for the replacement of seats in the TMS auditorium and instead move that to the replacement of cycle hardware for the Education Technology Initiative. I'm also asking that you make the budget assumption, which in last night's meeting was described as the most likely scenario regarding ECS funding from the state that we would level funding, which would be an increased assumption of $300,000. In addition, in addition, I'm asking you to assume a tax collection rate from the town based on a three-year average of actual collections. I'd actually propose that as a standing, standing practice. This would, the first three of those four things would result in revenue savings or offsets of $868,000. Then you would also have the additional revenue from, from adjusting to tax collecting. I would request you use those actions to create a net positive to the Board of Education budget from what the town manager proposed of at least $800,000 with additional, with the other revenue offsets going to support lowering the tax burden for Talon City, for Talon residents. We have built over the years a fund balance of over $12 million. One of the ways that has been happened by, is by making overly conservative budget assumptions. That forces the folks who are in these chairs to make decisions that are more difficult than they need to be. As a business owner, someone who's running a business, I can tell you the idea of trying to put together budgets, not based on what you believe to be the most realistic assumption and not taking inflation into account, simply pretending it out of existence, is, is a bad place to be. We have some really tough decisions that you all have to grapple with and that then we as voters will have, have to grapple with. Let's not make it any harder than it needs to be. Let, let's make sure we make the very best assumptions that we can in doing this. We built that fund balance up. The good news of that is it means we can be more to the real on what our budget assumptions is, are, because we can mitigate that risk with that fund. So I'm, I'm asking you to do that. I'm happy to answer, you know, additional questions. I know you all have had a lot of information from before you. So I thank you. I would also like to say, before I moved to Connecticut, I used to have to travel a lot for work, a lot for work. So I would just like to thank personally you, Jacob, for putting in the extra hours to make that meeting work last night. I'm sure, I don't know all the details, but I'm sure it was difficult. So just thank you to all of you and, and thank you specifically Jacob for making that a commendation.
Thank you. All right, we'll go back online. I don't see any hands raised at the moment, so I'll go back to the room. I, I think I see a hand on the left. If you'd like to come up.
Hello, my name is Abigail Davidson and I live at 304 Babcock. I graduated from Talon High in 2019, so I'm a bit of a semi-recent graduate. A lot of people have already been over why cutting all of the extracurriculars is a bad idea, so I don't have too much to say on that, aside from the fact that I actually did not get the best grades in high school. I was not on honor roll. I was not particularly academically inclined. However, I had a lot of extracurriculars. I did a lot of things outside of school and I was very dedicated to the classes that made more sense to me and worked for my brain. And I do believe that that is a major reason why I was able to apply and be accepted to several colleges and was offered scholarships there. And I think that for a lot of the kids who, even the ones that are academically inclined, giving them options outside of the classroom is extremely important for their future success and as a well-rounded, well-rounded individual. However, this proposed budget is also affecting the schools on a much wider level. It's cutting, or at least proposing to cut several teacher positions, nursing positions, a custodial position, and secretarial positions. And these are already positions that there are not a lot of because they have been cut so thoroughly already. These are people who are already very stretched thin and have either had their jobs cut out from underneath them or have had their jobs made much harder because of the greater responsibilities pushed upon them. And even just from a logistical standpoint, if you want more people to work here, if you want people to continue to work here, you need to make it appealing. Cutting things and making it less desirable is only negative for that situation. If you want people to be attracted to the district, you need to make it appealing. I also know from my time at the high school that several of the classes that were cut also had equipment that was used in them. The childhood development classes used robotic infants for their students that are still usable to this day. The home economics class used sewing machines that are still in working condition. These are still in the school and at the very least could be sold off to other schools to this high school or just the school system in general. Right now, they're sitting there collecting dust because we don't have enough people to teach these classes. So at the very least, this equipment should go to good use for someone and should be good use for the town to get more funding for these schools. I also understand that creating and passing budgets is a very difficult process and I understand that last year was especially difficult. However, this is the responsibility of the Town Council. Referendums are a part of that. It is your responsibility to ensure a budget that can benefit the town as much as possible. And I'm not idealistic enough to think that you're going to be able to make everybody happy or to give everybody everything that they want. But this is a job that you signed up to do, that you got elected for, that you volunteered to do. This is part of your responsibility. This town, I've grown up here since I was a small child and I will say it is very stubborn. And it is very attached to the idea of being a quaint, small town, which is fair, but we are also on a major highway and also have an opportunity for more major businesses. Opportunities that we are not and have not been taking. We had Dunkin' Donuts that had a drive-through built in and couldn't use it for years because of the town ordinance that say you couldn't have food served to people in their cars. And I don't see a reason for things like this in today's day and age. Introducing more major businesses is not going to ruin a small-town quaintness. It is going to help keep the town alive. We're not going to say that we're putting a strip mall on the town green, but we need more of these businesses to revitalize the town and bring in more money so that we can think about bringing in more revenue and not what else do we have to cut just to stay alive. I also think that while the Board of Ed gets the biggest part of the budget, it also seems like they are the first body on the chopping block. And why exactly is that? Why is that the one getting cut? Because this isn't just students in school. At this point, it is also major life skills, childcare. It is grabbing students for the future and is also attracting families and parents into the district. And again, if we don't make this appealing, people aren't going to come here. They're going to leave. People have said that they've been doing that. And if they don't have a reason to come here, how can we expect them to do any different? I grew up here and I graduated a few years ago. And I may not have kids, but I very much understand what it was like to be one in this town and how frustrating it was to have a lot of thoughts and opinions about what the town was doing and not being able to vote on them. And I understand that that is a completely separate matter and I'm very, very proud of all the students who have and will stand up and speak for themselves, but they need people to advocate for them. They rely on the adults to be able to ensure their future and we need to be there for them. And I understood what that was like and I want to be there for them, even if I am not as connected to them as I was when I was. And when I was in high school, the subject that I did the best in was history. I had the teachers, Mr. Chahaski, Mrs. Sterling, Mrs. Manning, and Mr. Reese. All of these people helped shape my future. Those were the classes that I enjoyed the most, that I thrived in. And half of those people are gone. Some of those positions are gone. And I'm currently enrolled and just got accepted into a graduate program for a master's in library and information science. A large part of the reason why I even pursued that and thought that I could was because of Ms. Fontaine, who ran this library. Because I got to do a seminar with her, because I worked with her, because on the day of my senior prom, I was reading books and she came up to me and said, hey, don't you have to go home and get ready for prom? And I said, yeah, I guess I do. And my mom had to drag me out to go get dressed for prom. And now her position is just on. And a librarian isn't just someone who checks books in and out. There's a reason why it's library and information sciences. Ms. Fontaine taught media literacy. She ran the computer lab. She maintained the entire library and also created a welcoming and quiet space for anybody who needed it and was willing to respect that. Without all of these people, I probably wouldn't be where I am today. I would not have been nearly as successful. I would have just been someone with half-decent grades who maybe got into college and maybe had an okay time. And I understand that this is a difficult process, but this is a lot bigger than any one thing. And it seems like this is a pattern of behavior that has been happening for years. And I understand it can be hard to break that, but this is not beneficial for the town in any way. We're just cutting off pieces of our own body and soon there's not going to be much left. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thanks to all of you for your commitment to the work of the town. I'd like to express my support for the budget request that the Board of Education put forth last evening. And to encourage each of you as Town Councilors and the Town Manager to first work diligently to generate more revenue for our town. It's the missing part of our equations discussed over the last several weeks. Supporting education is supporting the future of our town. A strong educational system is not only an investment in the well-being and growth of our children, but it's also a critical factor in making our town a desirable, excuse me, desirable place to live. When families consider moving here or staying here, the quality of our schools plays a pivotal role in that decision. Ensuring adequate funding for education contributes to maintaining our property value, values, excuse me, and attracting new residents when others outgrow their homes or move on. I remain deeply concerned about last year's cuts, let alone this year's, resulting in loss of nine teachers. Reducing staff impacts our students' ability to explore their own future endeavors and limits the opportunities available to them. Investing in our schools means investing in their potential, their creativity, and their development. I hope you will take into consideration the experiences and perspectives of the students, the families, the teachers, the staff, and the administrators of our school system. Many of those individuals are your neighbors and your friends and they're invested deeply in the success of our community. Please support the recommendations that the Board of Education discussed last evening. Thank you again for your dedication to our town and service you provide. Again, thank you. Liz Costa, 54 Jesiding.
We'll go back to the room. Do we have anyone in the room who'd like to speak? Can I see a hand on the podium side?
Evening, everyone. My name is Amanda Valman. I live at 52 Williams Way. Spoken Tuesday in support of fully funding the Board of Education's budget because education is so very critical for our children's futures. After listening to last night's joint meeting, I'm encouraged that the Board of Ed and the Town Council have identified potential funds to help close the gap. I want to recognize the students who spoke so passionately. I wish them the confidence to never stop speaking of power and the grace and the eloquence to do so effectively. I'm grateful for the parents who champion, championed their kids and I respect those who spoke in opposition because a strong community values all perspectives, not just the ones we agree with. In my opinion, our children should be our top priority. They will shape the future and they need a strong education to do so. Seems we found a way to support them in the budget and if that stands, we need to find a balance between the budget or within the budget to help those need. I mentioned in the last meeting, I grew up in a working-class family in Texas. We didn't have a lot, but always felt like that. My mom always made sure to share whatever we could. So if you know anything about Texas, you know going to church is as popular a pastime as watching football. Every week I found myself in the pew, listening to our teacher extol the virtues of helping the poor, feeding the hungry, and caring for the sick. But it was a lesson that often left at the door. And yet, outside those church doors, those lessons faded fast and people got caught up in their own lives, their own struggles, and those needs became an afterthought. We are lucky to have very little actual poverty in our town. Most of us have our roof over our heads and food on the table, but we have folks living paycheck to paycheck. Folks one illness or job loss away from not affording basic needs. Folks who are nervous about a recession around the corner and how they will weather it. Though it's easy to forget, life moves fast and we all have so much on our plates. When we talk about our town budget, let's not forget the lessons that were learned at church. Let's remember our duty to each other, especially to those who need help the most. Whatever your faith, philosophy, or guiding principles, compassion should always lead the way. With that said, let's talk about the folks struggling with the tax increase. I propose a progressive Mel rate, a lower tax rate in the first portion of property value and a slightly higher rate on anything above that. Where these brackets are set up, set up for spirited debate, but there are a lot of good ways to determine that. This doesn't eliminate tax increases. You just can't escape that, but it shifts more the burden to those who can better afford it. If that's not an option, or if we can't find funds, it's brought away somewhere else, then definitely have tough choices ahead. We need teachers, we need paras, support staff, and maintenance staff. So we must find a way to maintain those positions. Parents and community members will need to step up and volunteer for the rest. I help with the BTO and I can tell you, it's the same small group of parents doing all the work. So if you're fighting for your kids, right, just remember you should be in the school year-round with them. If we can't adjust tax rates, we need to increase the help at the most. Long-term, and I reiterate this again, we need to diversify revenue. This town needs businesses to move or to keep money here instead of sending it to neighboring communities. We need tall and own, we need tall and made. We should be taxing logged vacant commercial properties and encouraging smaller or shared spaces to lower barriers for startup. We should be pursuing every available public and private grant we can find. We are fortunate to have experienced entrepreneurs and business experts right here in our community. Should actively seek their input and work collaboratively to attract and sustain businesses that strengthen our local economy. As mentioned before, we have an interstate running through our town. Let's capitalize on it. One of the food and lodging options can draw travelers in, while storefronts, events, and attractions can bring our neighbors here to spend money. The short term, let's do what we can to help as many people as possible with this budget. Let's make sure children can succeed in school and beyond. And let's make sure our neighbors can meet their basic needs. In the long term, let's be bold, let's be creative, and let's find ways to make our town thrive. Thank you.
Watch mine. I'm not seeing anyone online. I'll go back to the room. Gentlemen.
Hey, everyone. My name is Aaron Risley, one-three Mount Spring Road. I'm currently a sophomore at Talon High School and I've lived in Talon my whole life. I was told something earlier today that really stuck with me and it's something I believed for years. I was told that us, the students, are the future of this country. I was told that we are incredibly ingenious, resourceful, and strong when we get our education every single day. Every word I just said were words that I have believed for as long as I can remember. Every single day, I see that me and my fellow students are capable of greatness. We are capable of triumphing over obstacles that many would deem impossible. We are capable of creating, capable of innovating. We are all seeking innovation so that we can push forward and make this world a stronger and better place. I see it every day in school. Every single student is capable of remarkable achievements. We just need the tools to do so. To be able to accomplish success, to be able to make this world better, to be able to lead this nation, us students need that competitive edge, the drive for success that we get from clubs and sports. It's true that we are the few true leaders of this nation. It's true that we are the ones who will move this nation forward. And it's true that we all require a strong, sustainable education to do so. Whether you do DECA, theater, or any club for school, to every student, we are important. We can and will become the strongest versions of ourselves with a strong education. And that is why we need the best possible. Because we are the future, the future of this nation, the future of this world. We all are. Thank you.
Not seeing any hands on Zoom. I'll go back to the room.
If I may, I don't know how to raise my hand on here, but do you mind if I speak, please? Sorry.
Yes, we'll continue order with Zoom, so you may.
Thank you. My name is Michael Wiggins. I live on four-eighty-six Talon Stage and there are quite a few things I could say here at this moment in time, but there aren't enough words to express how I feel about this and how I think it can affect our community as a whole. Now, I'm gonna ask you a question, which I will go back to later in my advocate. And this question is, what is the Talon community? Are we friends? Are we family? Or something more than that? Are we just random strangers saying hi? No. We are closer than that. As I've been in Talon for about six years now, moving from middle school, I've met a lot of people who have helped me throughout my time here, especially in the Talon High School where I finally opened up and started to talk to new people. And this really affected me in a multitude of ways that I can't even begin to describe. I met some best friends like Aaron. I've had amazing partners, friends, and people who supported me throughout the way. The clubs I've joined and I plan on joining, I'm a two-year DECA member. And the people in there are amazing. I can't even begin to describe the support they showed me throughout my time being there and how much that has affected me as a person and how it can help me later down the road. Half of this, what I'm saying now, you may not even remember by the end of what I'm saying. But I will say that these teachers, they are amazing at what they do. I've learned so much in these past two years than I think I ever will. There's not been a time where I haven't felt alone due to my teachers supporting me through and through. Even if it's just on small assignments that I find struggling, they will be there to help me. And even if my teachers aren't there to support me, I still have my friends. And those connections, I think, are what's making me who I am today. A sophomore who's sixteen and I'm still trying to discover myself. Now, let me ask you again, what is the Talon community? Are we friends? Are we family? Are we passerby? Who knows? But I believe we're all a community. And you may have a different definition, but here's mine. We all are a family. It doesn't matter who you are, where you come from. The point is we have all have something in common. We want to succeed in life. We want to have security. And what better way to do that than to help the education systems today? This budget is cutting teachers, books, and even more things that I can't even describe. Because it'll take a little too long. But if we want to continue down this path, I cannot, I don't think I can even state what, how this will affect every student I have known. Because half of the people I know are in clubs and they love doing what they're doing. Smith, for example, they do community service projects. They go down and help some seniors, sorry, DECA does that. And overall, it benefits the community. Now, you may have different reasons on this budget and different opinions. And for effect, multiple people have different say in this, but here's mine. This high school has changed the way that I have a look on Talon. This high school has given me more hope than I can ever imagine for my future due to the education that I have been given by multiple teachers that I have found supportive and have taught me something that I don't think I'll ever learn anywhere else. That is all. Thank you.
Back to the room. I believe there is a gentleman in the front who'd like to speak.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi, my name is Mark Mitchell. I'm at Forty-five Shores Drive here in Talon. Well, the first thing I want to note is that I really applaud the students who are here, the young people who are here, who have been speaking up for the school budget. And I certainly applaud that. I thought that comments made earlier by others, I don't know if the person was a teacher or not, but certainly complimentary. And clearly, people love the Talon School District. In fact, anecdotally, I have relatives who moved here, so their kids would grow up in Talon School District. I've met people who recently moved here because the Talon School District has such a good reputation. The other thing, though, I would want to say, so certainly we want the best education for our children. But that's only one attribute. And what I learned when I went through, after going through high school, through budgeting and stuff, is that it's not enough to look at one attribute. Of course, we all want better education for our students. But the other attribute to consider is what is the cost of that education? And is that cost reasonable or not? Is the school district run in a manner that it's efficient and effective or not? I have heard anecdotally, well, I've heard a couple of things. One thing, one gentleman tonight mentioned a twelve million dollar bond balance surplus. I'm shocked at how high that number is. And the reason why is that in the state of Connecticut, if you wanted to reduce the school budget, you cannot by law reduce the school budget. So the only effective mechanism you have for doing, for making sure that we don't have excess funds. So why do we need a twelve million dollar fund balance? That makes no sense to me whatsoever. Because by law, you can't reduce the budget. So numbers are going to go up, numbers of students will go up, it will go down. I don't have those comparative numbers with me tonight. But I would ask you to take these other attributes into consideration. And the other thing I would say is that because it's such a significant portion of the budget, that my concern is that there are town services that are being denied the people of the town because there's not enough money available to the town because a huge proportion of the budget is for the school budget. So the other thing that I'm confused about, and not for me to answer, but for you to consider, is I find it confusing that people have twice here tonight mentioned that there are going to be cuts because the proposal that I read says that the twenty-five, twenty-six manager budget proposes to increase the budget by more than one point seven million dollars. And that and that's a three point three five percent increase. I, based on my conversations with these people who live in town and my own observations, I think that if you start from the top and, by the way, that's three point three five for the property taxes. But what I've heard, people think that it would be more reasonable to have a property tax increase more along one point two five percent. So if you, if instead of one point seven million dollars increases in costs of total property taxes, my proposal would be to increase property taxes by six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars, which would be a one point two five percent increase. Now, the question is, where does that come from? So since the bulk of the funding goes to the school district, you would take the school district's proportion of two point nine nine percent and you could reduce it by that and reduce their increase to one point five three percent to bring them more in mind. And here is the other thing that concerns me, thinking about this financially. And again, you know, I have good education too. And what my good education taught me is this. You've got a school district with a forty-two million dollar budget. You've got a town that has a much smaller budget. Why would, why would the school budget have a larger increase than the town? The school district has economies and efficiencies, economies of scale and efficiencies. So I actually think you should reduce the school budget. I would, I would, I would increase it by, I would reduce the proposed, the proposal of increasing it. So that you increase the school budget one point five three percent, which is six hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. And as far as what do you do with that? You could take a hundred thousand of that and pay a consultant to tell you where the efficiencies could be gained within the school district. And you'd still have five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars more than you had the year before. So my proposal again is to, to limit the increase to the school budget to two percent. Well, excuse me, it was two percent before to one point five three percent. And that would give you a school budget of forty-four million, five hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and five cents. And so, and that is, that I think that that would be reasonable. And I think with twelve million dollars available in fund balance, that the school district could manage that size budget just fine. And it would be something that would be fair and appropriate to the taxpayers. Thank you for your time.
We'll go back to Zoom. If there's anybody who, somebody who raised their hand would like to speak the same. Right, we'll go to Mr. Register.
Good evening, everybody. I'll be quick. Jayden Register, sixty-eight Old Stafford Road. I, I've heard quite a few things over the last week. I'm not going to take up anyone's time. I want to make sure the focus is on everybody who's been speaking from the public. The first thing is, just to, just to comment on a one point five percent or anything like that, I just want to remind folks that the contractual obligations that the Board of Ed has, as it stands right now, is, is, is already at two point two percent. So a one point five percent increase doesn't even necessarily cover the cost of, of the contractual obligations that we are insisted upon to, to cover. So that's number one. Number two, I've heard a lot of talk, a lot of the talk over the last couple of nights has been about our co-curricular programs and they've been referred to as extracurriculars. And that's not necessarily wrong. The reason I refer to them as co-curriculars, and I think I actually started referring to them when I started serving on the Board of Education, is because they sort of coincide with, with academics nowadays, co-curriculars. And I've talked about them a ton, the students have talked about them a ton, the parents, everybody's talked about them a ton. They coincide with academics nowadays. These are, these are, these are programs that, you know, students go to school for. You know, a lot of students go to school for what they get to experience at, after school, at their after-school program. And so I just wanted to mention that extracurriculars are also called co-curriculars. So if anyone's, you know, deeming them as extra or this and that, and everyone is entitled to their own opinion. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it got across that a lot of us view these as co-curriculars. And sometimes it is just a matter of, you know, verbiage and whatnot, but I just wanted to get that across. So I appreciate everyone being there tonight. Best of luck to you. I'll be watching all night long. Thank you.
Go back to the room. Is there anybody in the room? The flu on the podium side?
Hello, I'm Diana Rodriguez, a sophomore at Talon High School. And I would like to talk a bit about some statistics based off the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four adopted budget. Seventy-one percent of our town are family households and seventy-four percent are married couples. Of the total members of the town, the main age ranges are forty-five to fifty-four and twenty-five to thirty-four, which statistically speaking, means people that have children are maybe here to build a family, further supported by the percentage of married couples. Also, children up to the age of nineteen made up twenty-five point seven percent of our town last year and twenty-six percent this year. These school budget cuts affect just over one-fourth of the population, not to mention the effects it would have on their parents, further increasing that percentage. Looking at the population further, it can be seen that less people want to move here as our education system becomes worse. In twenty-twenty-one, in comparison to twenty-twenty, we lost point three percent of the population. And in twenty-twenty-three, another point two percent. And in this year, we only gained point four percent, meaning we still have less than before twenty-twenty. And over the past thirty years, our town population has increased by less and less and is now decreasing. When we look at the number of students enrolled in Talon Schools from twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-two, the number of students enrolled in the district was decreasing. And even with less students, our class sizes were still too big for teachers to manage and have proper resources and time for all. We continue to lose students in our school and teachers, meaning families are leaving this town and we are losing taxpayers. Now, I've talked a bit about some of the issues and I would like to make some suggestions for things to do. In this current budget, there are a few things I and many others believe are unnecessary. The two new basketball courts and a softball field should not be placed above properly funded education. This is using five hundred ninety-five thousand dollars of money that could be used for paying teachers, getting special education needs, clubs, and other activities. If the plan is to cut TMS sports, why do we need to redo their softball fields? We need to focus on the truly important issues in this town rather than the superficial ones. Furthermore, why spend seven hundred thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars on brand-new capital equipment when buying something used can still provide good resources we need without spending that excessive amount? Also, we can try to add more industry to our town. I understand that there being too much industry is a concern, but commercial and industrial land only makes up two point four percent of land use, and that has not changed over the years. Our industry is stagnant, and if we want to make more money, we need to start increasing it. These are our main employers and industry makes up the top ten taxpayers according to the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget and this year's proposed one. Adding to the argument, the more industry would greatly help our budget, bringing not only more jobs, but more tax money as well. We still have two hundred fifty-one unemployed community members and a large portion of the employed population work out of town. Bringing local jobs can add so much more to Talon. The property taxes, licenses, and permits, including building permits, made up eighty-two point oh-six percent of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget. And if we allow more businesses and infrastructure, the amount we could get from these areas would be even more significant. Thank you for your time, attention, and consideration.
Seeing anyone online. I'll go back to the room. Yes, you're the front.
Hello, my name is Becca Murray. I live at this line. I'm here to talk to you.
I'm here to talk to each and every one of you on Town Council. I am a part of a lot of clubs. I am the president of GSA Club. I took a strong leadership role in ETS. I am also in Model UN, Botany, PHS News and Media and more. Why are you taking this away from me? Many of my peers are unable to attend today. They are downstairs in the amphorium performing a concert. Unfortunately, I can't be there right now supporting them. I want to be. I have, um, eight presentation finish, eight pages of math homework. I have to study for, I have to write stuff for English, all of that to do tomorrow. But I am standing here in front of you to fight my needs. Extracurriculars is not an option, is not optional. It's important. I'm relying on that to get a scholarship and to get into college. I don't have the best grades, but I have very like I'm, I'm in a lot of extracurriculars. Most people in the school that are in extracurriculars. This is the future, the nation, state, town. So, it's in your hands. It's your choice if I'm gonna be walking to school crying tomorrow or not. So, please don't disappoint me. Thank you.
We'll go online to Sarah. We'll be on mute, Sarah.
Hello, um, I just wanna recommend that all residents are, are thought about when thinking about this budget. I absolutely support the Board of Ed increase that's needed to retain the teachers, provide the required services, the supplies. We, we need books, we need electricity, we need insurance, all that, great, let's do that. What I don't support is increases where it's not required and/or not able to be supported through other means. Clubs, extracurriculars, whatever we wanna call it for semantics are very important to children and adults. No one's arguing that. What is up for debate is who should fund it. A college doesn't care if a child was part of theater at a high school or theater during a town play. College doesn't care if a child is on a travel team or a school team or even a regionalized team. Furthermore, we heard that many of these current clubs are self-sustaining. I'm willing to bet that many clubs don't go away no matter what budget is passed. We also have a recreation department that used to have a robust sports program, art activities and even more. Bringing those programs back, allowing the people that wanna utilize them can pay for them and taking the cost of items off the ones that don't partake would be one of the possibilities. The rec department option would also allow for homeschoolers in town, of which there are many to participate. Currently, they go to private schools for sports and/or recreation departments in other towns for less competitive sports and other activities. So we're giving other towns our money. As for the rest of the budget, I would ask the Town Council to reevaluate. I'm not an expert on mowers or sports fields. What is the return on those? I, I would like the Town Council to think very critically on each wine item. Is it necessary? Is there another option? I also wanna point out that while we're looking to put so much money into the Board of Ed, town services like our library that serve everyone in town are grossly underfunded every year because the Board of Ed keeps asking for more and more. Did you know that Ms. Megan has one of the smallest budgets for kids' books in the entire state? There's some books that children are typically exposed to that are so worn out or not even available because she has to make decisions on what to get. As a family that takes out close to two hundred books a month, a majority of her books are from other towns and every time a Tallent book is checked out, a little money is given to the library. So we're giving other towns our money. Lastly, with the new evaluations and the predicted economy, many people will not be able to afford to live here. People are losing their jobs daily. People are going to be forced to move. It's unsustainable with all the other increasing prices. So we will be giving other towns our money. I don't envy the position of anyone there. There's no way to make everyone happy. I just ask that you think of the most benefit for the most residents and consider our current and predicted economic climate. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go back to the room. Um, I saw in the second row on podium side first.
Hi, I'm Colton Maxwell. Um, I have a sixty-one sixty Anthony Road. Um, I'm a sophomore at Tallent High School. I would like to start with all these thoughts are my own. Um, I wanna have a best of the home and the education system. I believe this is achievable. I understand how living in this town is hard, but I also believe that education and school safety is also important. Schools should really do pave the way for students, for success in students, students are future taxpayers and seniors. We can make the budget work. This can be achieved with some of the money from the UISF Fund, Internal Utility Internal Service Fund. You can also use capital funds to replace hardware for education technology, for the education technology initiative instead of replacing the middle school athletics seats. This was brought up by Superintendent Willet at the meeting Wednesday night. I believe education should be placed highly above the replacements of the basketball court and the softball field. The council is responsible for how the town runs. Investing in schools is crucial to the town's success. Your decisions, decisions you make at this meeting are immensely important. I hope you use the time after this public hearing to find a way to make it work. While you are talking amongst each other, please think of the students and staff in your school system. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to Evelyn on Zoom.
Hello, uh, my name's Evelyn Burdon. I live at forty-three Deerwood Road. Uh, I just wanted to say that I don't think you should go through with this budget cut. As has been said before, my family and I moved here because the schools were amazing. In middle school, I was in many clubs there, including GSA, Jasmine and a few others. There are so many kids that have learned from these clubs, like so many students have joined clubs because they wanna be a part of their school community and so many students have also joined clubs because these clubs give them the skills that they need for the future whenever they leave school. I want each of you council members to think back to when you were in elementary, middle or high school. I bet each one of you were in a club or sport that you loved a lot. Now I want you to imagine that those clubs and sports got taken away from you. What would your life be like in school if you didn't have those clubs or sports? I bet you'd be feeling sad, stressed, angry, lonely and maybe even a bit scared. A lot of students here have felt at least one of these emotions whenever they heard about the budget cut. Sports and clubs allow students not only to learn about whatever they're interested in pursuing in the future, but they also give them life skills plus social interactions. Clubs are also a great way for people unwind and get away from a stressful day of testing or school. So please don't take these clubs and sports away. Cause in the end, if it's taken away, we won't have a big community. We'll have a small one. I know this is a hard decision, but in the end, is it really a decision? Thank you.
Go back to the room. I guess you in the front.
Hello, my name is Sophia Cunningham. I reside at forty-two Eighth Berry Lane. I am currently a senior in high school and have been actively involved in our school's amazing curriculum. I have been involved in the National Honor Society, National Business Honor Society. Um, I served as the second state president, the second state officer this year, Captain Galzimai, contributed to morning announcements. These experiences, experiences have profoundly shaped my character and have showed the importance of, um, keeping the BOB budget for our school. During recent discussion about the budget, I voted my concerns as my criticism, being labeled as selfish, ignorant and my favorite upon. So I wanna preface this by saying these reflections are entirely my own and no teacher, advisor or parent hasn't influenced me to speak tonight. It has been highlighted that my programs are, they often do not come, they often do not return. Imagine our community devoid of business leaders, middle school athletics, robotics teams or drama clubs. These programs are instrumental in fostering a well-rounded and vibrant community that we can call Tallent. We discussed last night the impact of incredible teachers. I could not imagine a school without the English teacher who gave me a sixty-nine in the first essay I ever gave her and still saw the potential in me. Or the business teacher who pushed me to compete in DECA. Brothers and myself, I could not imagine the teacher who teaches about why we do what we do, how we can keep communities safe. The teacher who teaches history from numerous perspectives, the business teachers who encourage stock trading and top law in exciting ways. And the teacher who advocated for all mental health and helped us understand the way we will go through life as we get older. And I couldn't imagine my brothers not experiencing this, which is why I talk here today now as an older sister. I have four younger siblings, two of whom are in the Tallent School System and I worry about the future of their education. As families leave due to, due to budget cuts, it, it not only affects current students, but also the town's reputation. People wanna move to communities with strong school systems and if they continue to lose resources, it makes town less attractive to families looking to move here. That's less revenue and higher taxes now for our senior citizens. Good school ratings drive family incentive, business interest and community engagement. If we lose families, we lose funding and this cycle just continues. That said, I also believe this is an important opportunity to take a step back and ask if we need to examine our system itself. If we find ourselves in this situation year after year, maybe it's time to evaluate how we budget and allocate resources to ensure we are protecting what matters most. Our students, our seniors, our families and our educators and the strength, most importantly, of our community. Let's not just cut, let's make smart, sustainable changes that keep Tallent a place where families want to stay and invest in their future. Thank you.
I'll go Zoom. Beginning again on Zoom, is there anyone else in the room? Um, yes, in the back there.
Good evening, I'm Sarah Dagan Bullwin and I live at one sixty-three Old Close Road. Good evening Chair, Vice Chair and Councillors. Thank you for continuing the public hearings tonight. Um, holding a public hearing in a referendum that is close to direct democracy as we can get and a vital part of good policymaking. I am a parent of children in the town public schools and educator and an active member of the community. Often volunteering for mileage club book fairs or mystery readers. It is clear that the Board of Ed budget has been underfunded for the last ten-plus years, especially the last budget cycle, which saw the Board of Ed budget further cut by six hundred forty-nine thousand dollars after a failed referendum, only twenty-seven votes. In which multiple voices responded that the budget was too low and they could not support that budget. An underfunded budget anymore. The schools are a lifeline of the town and many come to Tallent to start families because the town has a great school system. We are not hearing that many are coming to town for a wonderful bond rating. Although important, we should focus on funding our education and less on fiscal conservatism. There is support in town for a vital and robust budget. Please listen to those voices tonight. Thank you.
Zoom. All right, we'll go back to the room. Uh, yes.
Good evening. Jennifer McMartin, two thirty-seven Whistley Road. I would like to speak tonight on the post-budget reduction of four pair positions. I've been a pair here in Tallent for thirteen years. Pairs are crucial to the success of our schools. We support staff and students, all students in every school in the district. We are there in the morning when the students get off the bus. We are there in the afternoon at dismissals. We are there for everything in between, supporting special ed, regular ed, math intervention, reading intervention, one-on-ones, lunch, recess, FRCs, clubs. Pairs are essential and pairs equal student success. Please do not cut pairs from the budget.
We'll go online to Erin.
Hi, everyone. I won't take up your time because I already submitted correspondence via email. Um, I did notice that some of the testimony given tonight, which I applaud everybody that has been, especially the students. Um, they mentioned wanting to expand on development and increase the revenue to the town. As a planning and zoning commissioner of four years now, we've, we've exhausted all, all of our resources, I wanna say. We've updated regulations, but we can't force development to happen. So I do wanna encourage anybody that is listening tonight or is in the room to come to our planning and zoning meetings. We meet twice a month on the second and fourth Monday of every month. And we're lucky to get one person, if, if any. So please bring your ideas to us because we want to help the town just as much as Board of Ed and Town Council. Thank you. Sorry, two eleven Charter Road.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we'll go back to the room.
Sixty-nine Tallent Stage Road. Um, I was talking to a student, uh, last night after last night's meeting and she was, had thanked me for some comments I'd had recently in one of the town meetings. And I said, well, the reason I wasn't, uh, speaking at any of these sessions was because there was so many individuals here that were doing it, okay? Unfortunately, um, after the last couple of nights, um, I felt the need to kind of address a couple of things, um, that have been bothering me since last year, quite honestly. Um, my recollection is last year, everyone went out of their way uh, to have a unanimous, uh, decision for a budget that not many people liked or thought should be it, okay? Uh, my personal view, uh, I believe in democracy, small d, uh, and I think that everyone should have the opportunity to vote to their conscience and vote their mind. And just some artificial play nice thing really only accommodates those that have the power base in this council and town hall. So I disagree with that and hopefully if that happens this year, all of you won't be here next time around. Um, this budget that has been proposed, uh, in my view is unconscionable, okay, for lots of reasons. Um, when I, when I stopped here, conversations I'd have with students is that, uh, looking into the future, okay? Um, and I have never said this to them and I'm afraid to say it tonight. If I was in high school right now, I would probably be paralyzed, okay? With what I see in this world, what I see the direction things going, when I see what's gonna be needed from every single young person today. Okay, is beyond anything any of us can even conceive. So the only way we can prepare them, quite honestly, is to give them as many opportunities, not just classroom opportunities, but the opportunities that have been expressed over the last couple of nights and all the things that have been cut from that budget. So I, 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 you know, I, a part of it too, really, I find it almost galling that people have to get up here and plead really plead with you guys, okay, for what actually they deserve. Third item, uh, which, uh, council member, um, BB brought up last night, okay? Was the fact that you're sitting on a reserve that's in Texas, okay? The numbers I recall in my mind's thinking properly was somewhere around, it's at eighteen point seven percent based on the projection that I saw on a piece of paper last night. Um, the other night, um, the town manager mentioned that to keep our triple rate bond rating, that it's important that we keep ten to fifteen percent, somewhere in that range. Well, at eighteen point seven, we're well above that. And just the rough math without actually going into specifics tells me that could be roughly three million dollars that we're sitting on that we don't need to sit on. I'm not suggesting you take all three million, but when you have a change in cost like you did with insurance, it's presumed to be, okay, presumed to be a one-time hit that won't be necessarily reoccurring year after year because of the way you fund your insurance, which makes a lot of sense to help a self-funded program. Um, so you're not paying for another company's profits by having it, buying it from someone else. So clearly, if in my view, and if it was a business I was running, I was, I would naturally look for a million dollars from that fund to just carve that out and that's done. Okay, then we look at the rest of the equation. Um, and I find it, um, also unconscionable, quite honestly, that no one has come up with the thought process that we have those funds available. On top of that, I believe from memory going back a number of months, that the return, the investment returns that this town has received this past year, I believe was around a million dollars. I don't remember what the budget was, but that it was, I believe, a million dollars. So what we've done is we've grown this reserve as substantial last year and we benefited from interest rates, right? So why don't we take that benefit, which also equates to the million dollars we need in insurance costs and plug it right in and then start looking at everything else, okay? But, but the fact that we are looking to chop and decimate this school system is just ludicrous, okay? I'm an old guy. I'm an old guy, right? I don't have kids in this school, okay? My children are in their mid-30s. I have grandkids in another state, okay? So none of this is going to directly benefit me, other than as a community member, I think it's critical. Let me close because I know there's a lot of conversation around, we think government should be more like a business, okay? So I guess I'm going to give an analogy that I thought of earlier today as far as a business analogy, okay? This town, its franchise value, its brand value is the school system, okay? That's it. Yes, safety comes in, other things come into play. But the reality is, and we've heard from a lot of people, and we've seen the growth in this town, it represents young families and the vitality of this community is dictated by that. And the fact is, those are the individuals that need to be supported. And so if I was running this business and my CFO came to me and chopped and decimated a budget the way this was done, okay? They would be shown the door that day. I wouldn't even give them notice, okay? So if you're going to get rid of your brand value, get rid of your franchise value, you might as well close up, okay? Thank you for listening.
Not seeing anyone online. We'll go back to the room. Yes, in the back.
Thanks. Good evening. My name is Joe Goldman. I live at 163 Old Post Road. I'm a social studies teacher. I'm in a neighboring district. And first, I just want to start by saying I really appreciate the time that you have all put into this process. I've just been listening online and that alone has been sort of tiring. You guys have paid careful attention to a long process and you've given a lot of opportunity to people to speak, so. I appreciate that. So I think a lot of credit goes to you guys, the Board of Education, and also I think the students have done a really impressive job. So I think they deserve enormous credit. I think if you think back a couple of years to the way the discussions have gone, they haven't always been that inviting or even polite. And I think as a teacher, I really appreciate the civic engagement on the part of the students and also the tone they've set. And I think that's actually inspired more constructive conversations at this level, so. A lot of encouraging things there. You know, as a teacher, you can probably guess sort of where I stand on the budget. I certainly very supportive of schools and I think they're incredibly important. I did a little bit of math and I needed some help from the economics teacher in my department, but I thought this might be a little helpful. So we know that the collectively, it sounds like the average percentage of increase over the last 10 years for the for the education budget was about 1.67%, I believe. If that's right, that adds up to about a 16.7% increase in the total budget, I think if I got that right. But inflation has gone up about 28.6%. So the way I look at this is that the cost of running the school is outpacing inflation. And so while some of that could be attributed to efficiency, you could look for efficiency in the school system, there's no, ultimately, there's no way to keep up with that gap. So just as an example, if I just, I hope I got the math right, but if in the last 10 years, the schools were keeping up with inflation, there'd be about 4.3 million extra dollars in the budget. And I'm not trying to say here that that's necessarily possible because the healthcare costs outpaced inflation too. And so there's some built-in costs that are hard to keep up with, but imagine where we'd be if we were keeping up closer with that mark. The, you know, I listened to the conversation last night and I listened to members of the board say like, there really is nowhere left to cut. And as a teacher, I can tell you it would be very, very difficult to continue to cut staff after listening to the discussions that have happened over the last few years without really terrible pains in the schools. My two kids are here. I want them to go through the system as funded as possible. And on the bright side, I'm really glad that they can see civics in action. I'm glad that they can see democracy at play here. And so I wish all of you, genuinely, I wish you good luck with this process. I appreciate that this is difficult. I know it's easy for me to stand here and give advice and you have to actually ultimately make a decision on what the final product looks like, but I thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak, so thank you.
Not seeing anyone on Zoom, so continue to go to the room. Is there anyone in the room? Oh, I see.
Good evening. Nice to see everybody. My name is Mary Rose DeBarry, 37, Ryan Road. After thorough deliberation, the Town Council will finalize a budget balancing both town and educational needs. You have dedicated countless hours to this process. I know that you have. The Board of Education has spent months negotiating, carefully determining what is essential to support our students, making necessary compromises along the way. Now, once the budget is set, it must be actively promoted within our community. We elected you to do this work and we trust you've done it. To come to where we're going to come to. But your responsibility doesn't end there. Make sure the budget passes on the first time. I unfortunately, and everybody has seen posts and comments that sabotage the hard work that goes into the budget that you're developing. We deserve to have the work that you've done promoted. So we're not here again and again and again, and it costs more money to do that again, and it costs more cuts and more heartache. So once you've decided what it is, we've elected you. You're our voice to make the tough decisions. Please promote it to our community. And if you can look us in the eye, then we think you've done the job that you've honestly failed your best job. We appreciate that. Not going to all like it. There's going to be things that we all miss out on. And I fully support the education budget as proposed. But we're looking at you to represent us when the time comes for referendum. And these kids deserve it. We deserve not to have things thrown on social media and rotten things to say about each other and our community. And that's what I'm asking. So I appreciate it. I appreciate all your time and effort. But please, work together to get this budget passed. I'm hoping it looks better than some of the things I've seen. But once you've decided, be the adults. Thank you.
Luke Broderick on Zoom.
Hi, I'm Luke Broderick. I'm from 11 Justin Way. I'm a junior at Tallinn High School. I take AP and honors classes. I serve as a vice president of the Student Managed Investment Fund. I actively participate in ski club and the Health Science Club. And I stand before you guys today to argue against the proposed budget cuts to our towns' clubs. An issue that threatens not only our extracurricular opportunities, but also the future of our community. Clubs are not just optional pastimes, so they are vital to the development of students and the well-being of our town. Take, for example, the Student Managed Investment Fund. We don't just learn about stocks and trading. We learn about financial literacy, a skill that shapes our futures. But more than that, we raise over $1,000 annually for the local food shelter corner sound, proving that clubs have a direct and meaningful impact on our community. If funding is slashed, programs like this will struggle to continue. And our town loses not only educated students, but also crucial charitable contributions. The argument for budget cuts often revolves around cost-saving measures, but what's the cost of limiting students' opportunities? Research consistently shows that students involved in extracurricular activities perform better academically, developing leadership skills, and contribute more to society as adults. Cutting funding now is not a savings, it's an investment loss. Beyond academics, clubs provide a sense of belonging. Whether it's skiing down the slopes in ski club, conducting experiments in Health and Science Club, or working with peers to organize charity events, these activities shape who we are. They help students find their passion, building friendships, and learn responsibility. By taking these opportunities away, we risk disengaging students who might otherwise thrive in these environments. Let's stand together and fight for the opportunities that shape our students, strengthen our town, and secure our future. Thank you.
Go back to the room. You want, yes, I see again.
Good evening. My name's Erica Wells. I live at 350 Old Post Road. We moved here in 2011. At the time, we had two toddlers and a sixth grader. And in large part, we moved here because of the school system. In 2011, Money Magazine had Tallinn as the ninth best small town in the country. In large part because of the education and the high median income that Tallinn had. I don't know where we rank now because we're not even listed. Okay? Since we've lived here, every year that the budget comes up, the education gets less. Costs go up. I mean, my household costs have gone up. And I got to make cuts to afford it. And I understand that the education has to make certain cuts to afford their budget. But it shouldn't be at the expense of our children. I have one child who no longer goes to Tallinn schools, why? Because Tallinn didn't offer what he needed. And I actually hate that. I love that he's thriving where he is, but I hate we had to look elsewhere for that. I've had one graduate and from what she was offered in her middle school to senior year to what my boys have been offered is vastly different. In a 14-year period, that's insane to me. We always want better for our kids than what we have. And what I was offered as a high school student to what they're offered is drastically different and not for the best. It's less and less and less. When we moved here, everybody actually laughed at us because they're like, oh my God, you're moving to Tallinn. Their taxes are high. That was 2011 and that was the narrative then, that Tallinn had high taxes. But guess what? I believe you get what you pay for. I wanted a better education for my children, so I was willing to pay more in taxes. Do I want to pay more in taxes? No. But what I want more than not paying more in taxes is my child to have a really good education and offered more than I was. My incoming senior, now junior, I would say he largely gets up and goes to school every day because he wants to play football. And while I know high school sports aren't on the chopping block, it's still an extracurricular activity. And him going to school to play football is no different than the kid that's going to school so they can perform on stage for drama club. One is not greater than the other. That's, I think, the joy of public school is you're supposed to be able to accommodate all walks of life. And yep, the argument from people who don't support the education budget is we'll send your kid to private school. Well, guess what? A $1,000 tax increase is a lot cheaper than a 6,500 private tuition. So I'm willing to pay it. And I know there's people on fixed incomes that it's going to drastically hurt. And I know, nobody in the education system in our town is getting rich. To say that the education part is just taking and increasing, like they're just taking this money and pocketing that is absurd. And to push that narrative is absurd. They're pushing for basic needs for our most vulnerable constituents in this town. And it's the children who can't get up and speak. I commend these ones for getting up and speaking. But the Birch Grove, the TIS students and the middle school students, they don't have that voice yet. And let's not take it away from them now before they ever get that opportunity. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Hold on, on Zoom, we'll go back to the room. Go back to online. I think there's nobody else.
My name is Ken Upling, Summerwood Bridge in Tallinn. I think you people have your priorities a little messed up. You want to spend over $100,000 for a new dump truck because the bed is a little rotten. Did anybody do any research on that and see how much at Hartford Equipment it costs to put a new body on that truck? Maybe $25,000, $30,000? You want to spend $500,000 plus dollars to put a sidewalk down the green when there's one on each side now? And it's been that way for over 300 years. You have these baseball fields, South River Road, Depot Road over by Willington. I've never seen anybody using them. You know, you have all these fields at the schools and Crandall Park and so forth, and yes, people use them. But those things, maintaining them costs the taxpayers a lot of money. Also, I I just can't believe with the way the world is right now in this country, people can't afford tax increases. You know, I've lived here for three years and I've never seen my taxes in 70 something years go up like they are in this town. And I think that, again, your priorities are kind of messed up. And someone should do some research on these things you want to spend money on.
Seeing no hands on Zoom, I'll go back to the room. Yes, see you in the blue.
Good evening. My name is Will Cusner, 142 Colesley Road. Mr. Foley, earlier this week, I had the pleasure of meeting you at our biannual interview day for my personal finance class. For those unaware, Interview Day is an activity where students participate in several mock interviews with industry professionals, preparing us for the competitive job market. I was able to speak with you for a few minutes during which time you asked me about which extracurriculars I'm involved in. I told you I was defense attorney for the mock trial team and president of DECA. You then asked me what is DECA? For those of you not familiar with DECA, I would like to provide you with more information. After all, before you cut a program, I believe you should fully understand the impact. DECA is one of the largest clubs at Tallinn High School. We meet Thursdays after school. DECA stands for Distributive Educational Clubs of America, and our chapter was established 13 years ago. In those 13 years, we've had 15 international medalists, 11 international finalists, and six international champions, placing top 10 in the world in their competitive events. But our impact is far from limited to our success in competition. I believe the impact can be found in our alumni. In fact, I've conducted a survey to qualify this impact. If anyone is interested in following along, I've emailed a copy of this document to you earlier this evening. And I am also happy to present my findings, if you're willing to pass. Out of 28 Tallinn-DECA respondents with graduation years ranging from 2014 to 2024, every reply indicated that DECA supported their college admissions or career process. When asked how valuable DECA was in shaping their college and career outcomes, respondents ranked DECA at an average of 9.2 out of 10. And while all respondents had their participation in DECA in common, their paths post-high school varied greatly. Some respondents went into economics, some in marketing, some in engineering, physics, healthcare, mathematics, hospitality, performance, visual arts, finance, psychology, and public policy. Our respondents attended universities such as Northeastern, Maryland, Penn State, Bentley, Ohio State, and Brown University, marking the only Tallinn graduate in 15 years to attend an Ivy League school. To further demonstrate DECA's value, I'd like to make you aware that many school districts across the country offer DECA as a class, a business curricular offering. Tallinn-DECA's program is facilitated as an extracurricular program. In Tallinn, we are bringing business education beyond the classroom. In Tallinn, we are bringing business education beyond the classroom with a minimal cost of a teacher's stipend. So comparing those numbers, instead of providing DECA curriculum through a teacher's salary, which I'm assuming would be around fifteen to twenty thousand dollars considering one block of a teacher's full salary, we are providing DECA instruction through the cost of a five thousand dollar stipend. This small investment yields a return rate many times its value by contributing to elite college acceptance, merit scholarships, and instilling valuable twenty-first century skills that position our graduates to become critical thinkers and professionals of the next generation. This return on investment is proven by the survey results I have presented to you. Mr. Foley, at the end of our conversation on Interview Day, you asked my peers and I what we look for in a leader. I can confidently answer that I look for someone that truly represents the best interests of their community. Someone who can recognize the power that falls to them and do good with it. Someone who sees what it means to be a leader and fund the programs that support the next generation to do the same. Thank you.
Go back to the room. Back online. Other the room. The, is that white?
I'm not going to be as articulate as some of our younger people. Because I wasn't planning on speaking, but I kept getting a nudge from my neighbor. Literal payroll. So, um, I'm Cheryl Pullan, twenty-four Stacy Lane. Um, those on the Board of Ed know my daughter, Sarah Pullan, um, who's the Board of Ed wrapped for the last couple of years. As a town resident, I've been frustrated the last few years because of low community engagement, right? When we pass a budget and it barely passes, or it passes with a thirty percent, you know, take rate, I'll call it, right? Where only thirty percent of the voters even show up. It's not passing in my mind, but there's a whole lot of just blades. Well, if you wanted community engagement and community excitement about a budget, you have it, right? And most of these students cannot even vote. Right? So here's an opportunity. I'm not gonna come up and talk about the importance of education, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But I'm gonna piggyback up on what Mary Rose was suggesting. I think there's a huge opportunity to do two things. One is to engage our community, our community of voters, but our community of non-voters who've got a stake in this game, right? If, we don't want, we want them to come back to Connecticut when they're done with their school. Their schooling, right? We want them to settle here. We want them to settle here in Tallinn. So what I would say is engage your community. Don't let the budget process be the end. Don't be the passing of the referendum, right? Be the end, but be the beginning. Right? I kick myself for not getting involved in the budget process sooner than the last couple of days. I will tell you, I've spent the last two days poring over every line in this budget. Every single line, and I have so many questions that will probably go unanswered, right, for tonight's meeting. But I'm hoping between tonight and when we go to vote, that there is more. There's more transparency. What is being paid for and what is not going to be paid for by this budget? Right? I went through the B O A budget and I had to pour through the page forty-six, page forty-three to pitch, to understand like how all of this comes together. And at the end of the day, what is on the table to be paid for and what is not? Right? So I think there's a whole lot of communication that can happen. It's also like, how do you get a budget passed? Like, how do you get your constituents engaged in the process and then to vote yes? Right? It shows the priorities, that the research has been done. Right? I, in my prior career, my cost center was about the same budget size as the Tallinn. It was roughly fifty million dollars. And then my entire budget was people. And I'm surprised more people haven't come as a resident base to say, no, you need to cut your expenses, because I just, I just had a nine percent increase in my tax rate, essentially. I'm surprised they're not coming up and more people haven't come to say, no, you need to decrease from last year. While we're still seeing what's on the table is still an increase. In my job, I had to decrease my budget the last two years I was employed by ten percent every year. That equated to roughly twenty people a year that I had to say goodbye to. That is a tough, tough sell. That required I went through every single line of my budget and I had to get creative. Absolutely every line. Is this absolutely what's needed? Is this a priority? But I think there's an opportunity to bring this to the crowd, to the masses, to the community, to say, is this really important? Bet you're gonna hear a lot of feedback, right? Um, yeah. You heard a lot of it over the last couple of days. No ball, no ball fields. Yes, clubs. Know this, know that, right? Get everybody involved. Have more of those workshops. Increase the transparency. Sell that, right? If people understand and see value, they may be okay with a tax increase, right? If they understand what they're paying for and they agree with its value. That's running a business. And granted, government is not a business, but you guys are in the business of getting this budget passed, right? And sustaining this community. So I'm not here just, you know, to talk about one, you know, I'm not gonna advocate for how we spend the money, but I challenge you to look and assess those priorities and look under every single rock and get really creative and be thoughtful and, you know, what are some of our options here? And then take it out on the road and get some feedback. Right? And get this budget passed, but do the right steps to get it passed on that first try. If not, on the second try. But I think community engagement and that transparency is how you're gonna get there. Thank you.
Keep going with the room. Uh, yes.
From Wells, three fifty Old Post Road. Try to make this short, as I've already spoken Tuesday evening. I think, and I want to appreciate everybody's time here. Each and every one of you have a heavy burden in this budget. I'm gonna take a little bit different lens. I'm not gonna bore you with the importance of education. I think you all know how I personally feel and how a majority of the community that has spoken on public record feels about education. This budget has a high increase in tax that's gonna affect a wide range of citizens, especially the two on the most vulnerable sides of the spectrum, our seniors and obviously our children. Uh, and as, as our civic duty to lift up the most vulnerable and hold them high, right? Um, we have a hard decision here. Many of us facing a ten percent tax increase in the budget that's currently proposed have a lot of hard choices to make. Right? There's a lot of income choices that a lot of us have to make, wants versus needs. I think the town, and in this budget process, has the same responsibility that we are all gonna have with a ten percent increase in our taxes, wants versus needs. What you can afford, what you can fund, what is fiscally responsible? I've heard that word a lot thrown around, fiscally responsibility. So I'm gonna simplify this for everybody, right? I'm gonna make it real clear. Baby, ten percent taxes, you ain't getting no new car, and I ain't buying no new tractor. All right? It's that simple. So let's not be hypocritical about the process. Legit, if we're gonna be forced to make these hard cuts and these hard decisions as families, seniors, middle class, I don't care what spectrum you are, you guys gotta do the same in the town and in this budget. You're facing the same objective we are as residents, because once you create this budget, you pass it upon us. We have to eat it. We have to live it. We have to work it. So regardless of your narrative, regardless of your ideologies, at the end of the day, this decision tonight, you're passing it upon all of us. Every one of us have to eat it. So please, work the process, be fiscally responsible, line item by line item, what is needed, what is not? Because we all have to do that when you pass this upon us. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate all your work.
Right? Reminder, if you wanna speak on Zoom, just raise your hands. Um, anyone else in the room? Back online. But the room. Yes.
Hello again, Sabina Davis, three six three Garen. I was here Tuesday, if you remember, and spoke briefly, and I've showed up again to show my support for myself and my peers. The communities I have been introduced to through high school clubs have increased my confidence along with my peers, giving me enough support to speak today. Majority of students throughout high school and middle school have or are currently participating in after-school activities, and that's not to speak on the upcoming students. By removing clubs, you strip personality from these children who want to further pursue, pursue specific studies after high school, but don't have the space to show their talent. I truthfully believe that kids' education and communication skills should come before replacing the fields and areas that might not be around for them in the future. The children that want to or are currently participating in clubs will be missing out. These kids are waiting on you guys to make a decision, including those who are currently doing after-school activities and couldn't be in attendance today. Before I close out, I want to speak on, I want to speak something from one of my friends' behalf who couldn't attend tonight. We need textbooks and all of the special education aid to help prepare students at Tallinn High School for college. Getting rid of these would also make our school look really bad, and no one is going to want to send their children here. So as long as you're trying to save money on things, you're also going to lose it if no one wants to send their kids here. The future depends on everyone that is in the school right now. How are we going to have a stable community if no one is getting proper education? Thank you.
Here. I'll go to Julie on Zoom.
Hi, good evening. Um, Julie Brennan, one twenty-seven Ellington Road. I spoke the other night, so I'll keep this short, but I just wanted to clarify a little bit on the softball field. I've heard it brought up a couple of times now. Um, I am the secretary of Tallinn Little League, and we have been asking for years for the middle school softball field to um, have some work done. It is, um, unsafe. And I know even if there wasn't, uh, middle school sports, we would still be using that field. So we've worked with the town and Dr. Willett and finally got approval for the field. Um, just a few things about the field. There is, in the outfield, the grass is, um, all coming undone. Um, and you can literally kick the grass around, and also the, there's about a foot to two feet um, lip in the outfield, which is unsafe if you were to go catch a fly ball and you could trip, hurt your, the girls could hurt their ankles, you know, fall and all that. So that has to be fixed. The dugouts are unsafe. Um, the one beam holding one of the dugouts up has been loose for years. And the fencing, it just, it all needs work. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that. Um, that, you know, with Tallinn Little League and, um, the town and, and, um, Dr. Willett, we've, you know, came to the conclusion that, you know, we'd be able to get that, um, fixed this year. So I just, you know, I've heard this brought up a few times, and I just wanted to kind of give a little input and insight into where that came from. So, and thank you all for holding this, um, you know, public meeting, and we appreciate all that you guys do. Thank you.
Here. Go back to the room. Uh, yes, in the back.
Keep my glasses off. Um, Andy Powell, twenty-one Third Road Drive. Uh, I'd like to state that these are, um, my comments only and do not reflect my role as an elected official in this town. These are my personal comments. Um. We've only lived in Tallinn for twenty-two years, and I find of all the things that are in Tallinn, the thing I hate most, the, the most is the budget process. Quite honestly, if we look at this town, and I will admit, we had children in Manchester, and I was fit to be tied if we're gonna have our kids in Manchester schools, and we were looking, and Katie found Tallinn, and it's got a really good school system. And we moved here because of the school system, but over those twenty-two years, we've realized how amazing all the other services that we have. I trust no one more than Chief Lippel and his staff when it comes to public safety. Taking advantage of it twice. Still here. Fantastic. The school district, fantastic. All three boys going through the programs in band, in theater, varsity letter, having all the opportunities, gotten to their schools of choice and are moving forward. The thing that the budget system does to us is it drives us apart. For the last twenty-two years, the same comments happened. The same comments happened. We can't afford it. We're gonna lose kids. We can't do this. We can't do that. And it drives us apart as a community. In the twenty-two years that I've been here, this building was not here. In the twenty-two years that I've been here, we went from being one of the fastest-growing communities in Connecticut to now having smaller growth and actually losing people. We've gone through those traumatic situations. The folks that voted against doing this building, even though we had four or five uh, individual storage, not storage, but temporary classrooms stumping out to the side, the folks who voted against this building were also the same people that were up on the roof when we had a, uh, four-foot snowdrift or a six-foot snowdrift that was causing those drifts to go and, and destroy the building. Fortunately, it was built correctly. We spent our money well because the engineering worked. Tallinn has done amazing things in those, in those years. We have been innovators for a long time. Tallinn High School, oh, excuse me, it's Tallinn Middle School now, but Tallinn High School was one of the first fully electric buildings, public schools, that was built in the United States. Because back in the sixties, the promise of nuclear power was gonna make it cheap, and we could do it with electricity. Didn't turn out that way. But Tallinn persevered. We were one of the first cities to go off and do a net metering solar farm. So that South River Road area was actually one of the first ones that was done to use net metering, because then it's not tied to the building that was here. The building that you're pulling the, uh, the, the energy from. We were one of the first communities to do a combined healthcare and prescription program for both our town and our school district, so that we could do economies of scale. We have done innovative things to drive value to the shit, to the, to the taxpayers for as long as I've been here. How many towns that are our size that are triple A bond rated, and that's huge? We continually pass the audits. Has anybody in Tallinn been arrested for abuse of funds, for taking money? We hire professionals.
I want to talk.
Hello? Dr. Willett and Town Manager Foley are fantastic leaders of their organizations. We as citizens have done a good job in electing our town councils and our Board of Eds to find the right professionals that know what they're doing. None of us here know exactly what's going on in the different areas that we have. We don't have experience in that, because we're, while we're in close, as, as close as we are to actually being involved in that civic component, we don't live a day-to-day. So we have hired good people. And it's this budget process that drives us apart, not in public getting moved. My anger is with the electric. We come out every four years and vote at eighty-nine percent, ninety percent. Yeah, I voted for who? And that person, regardless of who they are, is not gonna affect you as much as the next two years, which are the people that fill these count, these seats, and then do the budget. We come out at what? Twenty percent? Embarrassing. We'll go out and vote for presidents and governors or whoever, but we won't come out and vote either for or against the thing that affects us the most. My challenge is to the population to get out and vote, because that is democracy. We do not live in a democracy. We live in, in a republic. This voting on referendum is the most democratic thing that we will do. Yet we complain. We pull ourselves apart. We go off and do all this back and forth for twenty-two years, but only twenty percent of the people. but only twenty percent of people are thinking it's important enough to come out and vote. Personally, I would support more money for both education and for the town. I'm gifted in that sense that I can afford to do that. But I know that folks can't do that. And I feel that we have to have that balance. But at the end of the day, your responsibility is not to cut or not to increase too dramatically. You're supposed to supply a fairly educated guess on what we're going to need. The responsibility then is on the population to show up and actually vote for or against it. That's where the responsibility is, and that's the only time I'm disappointed with Tallinn. Twenty percent, if we're lucky, will actually come out and be engaged in the most democratic component of our government, which is deciding as a community what we're going to do. We have an amazing community. We have amazing, we have spent the money to have more than what the state wants us for open field, of open space. We've expanded our access to that open space uh, for, throughout the last twenty-two years. We have changed our rules for commerce to make it even more we can get more people to the town. We're limited in regards of what we can actually do. My challenge, again, let's talk and do what we do, but then let's back up our elected officials and actually come out and vote in the process. That's where the failures. Thank you for.
I see Evelyn's hand. I know she's spoken for, and I'll give her an opportunity to speak again, but before I go to.
It's actually her mom.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry. Um, so this is Stephanie Burdine. I spoke on Tuesday. I'm from forty-three Deerwood as well. Um, I'll make it really quick, but um, I just wanted to say that I went over the budget as well, um, all the documentation that was provided with the presentation that you did yesterday. I have a master's degree in mathematics, and it was challenging for me to go through, just because it wasn't transparent and plain. Um, I really appreciate all the effort that went into putting that presentation together, so please don't hear me saying that at all. Um, I just wanted to call out the um, inclusivity of the presentation, and um, one of the ways I think we can get people to participate more and also to understand where you're coming from as a town council is to present this information in a way that is consumable by everybody. Um, and, you know, putting line items on there with an explanation as to why, because, you know, when I hear us, a, a baseball field needs to be fixed up, I'm going to probably have the same reaction as a lot of parents, which is, well, that's not important. But to the people who are affected by that, it is important, and having a brief description as to why that was considered in the budget is really important for all of us to be compassionate and empathetic to each other. And so, you know, as a person who works in technology, where documentation is extremely important, I just ask that we make our documentation and our presentations more accessible, so that way, when you go over this in a town council meeting, everyone's not on edge and we're not all against each other. We understand each other, and we start from a place of empathy and compassion, and then we work from there to, to really decide what's best for the city. Um, so that's all I wanted to say was just, can we make these presentations and these line items more inclusive for everybody?
Here. We'll go back to the room. Yes.
Hi, my name is Allison Filipino from twenty-six Ridge Road. I'm a freshman at Tallinn High School, and although I didn't participate in many extracurricular activities this year, I did participate in DECA for the first quarter. I decided that wasn't the path for me, and I left it. And that's the beauty of the extracurriculars at this school. We have the ability to join new ones, drop them if it's not your path, because that's what we do at this school. I also happen to be friends and peers with many kids that participate in theater. I'm in theater studies, a class where we look behind the audience perspective of plays and musicals. Another thing we do in this class is construct sets. Me and my peers in this class played roles both in painting and constructing the sets for our most recent school play, Play Store. So many kids in high school that struggle with their mental health and putting themselves out there seek out extracurriculars as a way of coming out of their shell. I've seen many people flourish and find the things that truly make them happy within theater and other clubs. If there's anything we can't afford, it's to see so many high school kids never fully come out of their shell and never truly find the things that make them happy. Extracurriculars help with that, too. As well, athletics in middle school, which prepares kids to go into high school athletics and even college sports, possibly even a professional career in athletics. I just ask, as a member of this community and a student in their first year at this school, please, if you're going to prioritize something for the good of these kids, don't take away our clubs. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room? Uh, the red.
Hi, James Corvino, where's Angela Drack? I spoke on Tuesday, and after hearing many others speak on both nights, I thought of a couple more things. Um, so it's hard not to repeat ideas, though. So many things, so many spoken of things like sports, course, that no longer look abandoned, but still be abandoned. There's so many contradictory choices here. She seems to come from two entirely different worlds. People have spoken of getting more business in town. It's a choice that we debated on. Um, but it's, it's a solid idea. You want good business, business is a business. And cutting that only digs a deeper hole there. This is a community. Communities always have a factor of loyalty. You've seen that loyalty over the past few days in so many different ways. I think, like I said, I'm fairly observant from what I've observed. If you want loyalty, you weren't getting it from a nice tax rate or a shiny new basketball court. You're getting it from people who are happy to be here and happen to see their children be here. You get it from making their lives interesting. And that's something you're not going to get from just blowing some notes. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go back to the room. Yes, back.
Hello, I'm Katie Bonner from twenty-three Lakeview Heights. Cutting programs around the schools to this degree is unthinkable. Extracurriculars serve as a lifeline for several students throughout all the schools and serve as a way for them to find communities in which they can fully be supported. I'm a senior at Tallinn High, however, I recently moved to town my freshman year. Without various clubs such as theater and morning announcements, I would not be the person I am today. And I'm sure other students could say the same, no matter what club they are part of. The fact that these students who are part of these clubs are the same ones that speak up for themselves at these meetings truly represent how clubs are more than just a fun activity. Additionally, cutting all library books and textbooks only fuels the fire. Twenty-eight percent of adults score at a level one or lower reading level, and cutting these crucial resources only sets up our students for the same failure. Finally, reducing special ed services such as outplacement and legal services is incomprehensible for children like my sister, who attends the American School for the Death in West Hartford. These cuts would force her into a world of silence where she has to attend a school without the resources she needs to thrive. Prioritizing expensive projects such as replacing the seats in the middle school and buying an eighty thousand dollar truck over the quality of life of Tallinn's children is genuinely absurd. Although I'm graduating this year, these issues extend far beyond myself and the current students enrolled at Tallinn. And I hope to take into consideration the damages that these cuts would have, not only on the present, but also the future of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Hands on Zoom. Currently, I'll continue to go to the room. Uh, yes.
Hello, my name is Mao Zhen Dulu, and I live at ninety-seven North Atlanta. I am a freshman here at Tallinn High School. So back when I was in eighth grade, I joined the drama. Before, I thought it was just a fun thing to do with my friends, but then I found myself enjoying it even more. I went to the high school to watch the performance of Punchbowl from Notre Dame, and I was amazed by the set and all the actors. That's when I knew I also wanted to join the theater high school. Now I'm in three clubs, one of which is theater. Um, during my time, I really enjoyed the new people I met, and it made me more confident. Uh, I still have a lot more clubs I'd like to join, but if they're not here, I can't. How am I supposed to find if I have green talent, if I can't join any of the clubs? Well, I have the chance. I would still like to.
Go to the room. Go online. Go back to the room. Go online. Go to the room one more time. Yes. Don't say one word to speak, so I guess I'd like to comment.
Thank you. I, I know I spoke earlier, again, Mark Mitchell at Forty-five Shores Drive. Um, I just wanted to uh, comment and put things in perspective a little bit, not only for the board, but for the audience as well. Um, I am a numbers person, and I like it, I like letting the number. I like letting the numbers talk in rather than coming up with a narrative uh, and and looking for justification of that. And what the numbers show me are, as I said before, there's a twelve million dollar uh, fund balance um, that uh, that exists, and that's uh, um, and that certainly can be used, but I want to back up from there for just a minute. So it, it, it's clear to me from the comments tonight that there's some confusion about the way the process works. Um, and my understanding of the process is that the Board of Education, the superintendent develops a budget, goes to the Board of Education. That Board of Education passes a budget. In this year, they passed a, a budget proposing a seven point three, four percent increase, which is a, a big number. It's a, it's a historically big number. Uh, as, as the professor said earlier, the average here in Tallinn uh, for the last five years, budget increases have averaged one point eight eight percent. So for the Board of Education to propose seven point three, four percent increase is big, and that's sitting on a twelve million dollar surplus. So you have to ask yourself, what is that all about? Um, and what happens is then it comes to the town, and I think the town has recognized the fact that over the years uh, referendums have been voted down because they're too high, and the voters have signaled over the last um, ten, twelve years. Uh, on average, the budget increases to the school has been one point seven three percent. And that has satisfied the town residents, the voting town residents. Now, earlier, and a couple of people commented on how um, you know, we have a relatively low voter turnout. I, I see it the other way. A low turnout is a good indication. A low turnout indicates that people are in general happy with the way things have been going in Tallinn. If they were unhappy, you would have a ginormous turnout. So it's a little bit unconventional, but if you think about it, it means basically they've been happy with lower averages than seven point three four, and certainly if that were proposed, you would be having a referendum voted down. I want to commend the town this year for taking that proposal, which you, it could be argued that that is, that was an irresponsible proposal, and it wasn't well explained, uh, although you can look in their January documents. Um, and, and they've proposed something that's uh, more conservative and more in line with what voters have said in the past. And as I said earlier, uh, oh, yeah, here it is. I beg, pardon me. As I said earlier, what the town is proposing is um, to increase the school budget by two point nine nine percent, which again is historically higher than what the town has had. So I, I, I also see a problem here in that I think that either the school board and or the superintendent have somehow persuaded a lot of people tonight to talk about these massive cuts. There are no massive cuts. If you, if you look at the adopted budget, every single year it has increased. It's, it's increased from year after year. The, the, the cut is to the proposed budget. The cut is to the proposed budget. The actual budget increase between proposing is two point nine nine percent. I, that's what the numbers say to me, and I, I've looked them over. I've got the school board documents in front of me, and it says right on page one of the school board budget uh, that it says right here in black and white, they're proposing a seven point three, four percent increase. So I, and the people who are shaking their heads now, it indicates to me there's confusion around this issue. That's the polite way to put it. Uh, to me, it's a little disconcerting that the school board hasn't presented these numbers in, in, in a way that have been well understood by the public at large. Uh, the other thing that I would just add is that um, a lot of people here have made a lot of really good and kind-hearted comments about ways to address the school budget. A lot of the students have, a lot of, great, everything here, a lot of really good comments tonight, and I sincerely mean that. However, the way the process works is, although the town uh, will pass a budget and there'll be a referendum, it's the school board that implements that. So all of these great ideas and great conversations need to go to the school board, not to the town. It is the school board's responsibility. It is not your, it's not your responsibility as town board members to do this. And I think that needs to be refocused, too. Never parent needs to push it over that. The school board is the one that makes these decisions.
Excuse me. You guys, the floor.
Thank you. So, so I just wanted to remind people that it is the school board that needs to be engaged in these discussions, and it's the school board that could do a better job of having a uh, genuine uh, discussion with the public. Um, and, and I, I looked at the schedule that the school board had. I don't think they do enough in terms of transparency. People have mentioned online and in person that we should have more transparency. Uh, I think that is on the school board. I, I don't think that that, I think that the town is doing a fine job of that. Um, and so the, uh, so again, the budget is being increased, and, and it's not being decreased. And uh, as far as what I said before, in terms of uh, limiting the the increase uh, to one point five three percent, a couple of things. One is that somebody mentioned in inflation over the last ten years has been twenty-five percent. However, teacher salaries, I don't believe, have, have, are the, which are the bulk of the expenses in the school, those have not, those rates have not been, I don't think they're twenty-five percent increase. Maybe they, maybe they have been. But uh, they do make up a portion of it, but there are a lot of, you know, supplies have been seeing high inflation, but I'm not sure about school salaries. So I, I'm just not, you know, I just would point out that that's different. And again, uh, you can meet your contractual obligations by using some of the funds. And lastly, the advice I would give to the town and the perspective I would share with you is that I, I really liked the speaker earlier online who said, you know, come to the town planning board meetings uh, twice a month, and we, let's build business up. So my proposal would be, we take that twelve million dollar cushion and begin to spend that down, to hold the taxes down to what the population has voted for historically, and indeed build up our economic activity here in the town, bring in commercial businesses of, and and do things to work on that, so that, that, that revenue from those commercial resources can help offset the burden on individuals. And I personally would be happy to participate in those discussions and be engaged in trying to figure out ways to bring uh, to bring commercial development to the town. So with that, I want to thank you for your time and attention and the opportunity to speak through tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I've seen the orange, orange hats.
Rebecca Rizley, one oh three Mountain Spring Road. I'm gonna have a few minutes gathering my thoughts for some response here. Um, yes, we're sitting on twelve million dollars. That twelve million dollars is under the town council control, town council decision. There's nothing that the Board of Ed in view with that money without the town council's approval. Um, so to speak. Yes, we have funded the Board of Education at one-ish percent average over ten-plus years. Underfunded the Board of Education budget year after year after year, which in turn becomes a need for asking for a seven percent. Asking for something that's going to keep our services, retain our services, meet our contractual obligations, and keep our systems full. If we underfund by one-ish percent year after year. year after year after year, then there's gonna be a come-to-Jesus moment where there's gonna be a need for a 7%. Or, you know, and working out that 7% through other means. When these two boards came together last night to have some interesting, unique conversations together, breaking bread across the aisle, so to speak, which we shouldn't even have to do because we are one town. We are one budget. The Board of Education does make up the bulk of that budget. But if this town wants to thrive, if this town wants to survive, they will see the need to support the Board of Education's budget and fund so that we are not losing. Yes, we speak about cuts. We speak about cuts. People saying, oh, we don't make cuts to the Board of Education budget. No, no, no. You have to fund the Board of Education budget at the same rate every year. We can't cut your budget. But when your obligations go up every year and you have to meet contractual obligations, where does that other money come from? It comes in the form of cuts, reductions, whatever word you want to use for it. Okay? You know, I've tried to gather my thoughts. I'm speaking off the cuff. Obviously passionate about this. I've been to a lot of these meetings. Been to a lot of Board of Education meetings. I've been to a lot of town council meetings. What I do want to point out tonight are these kids. Okay, I say kids, young adults. I am so proud of them. This whole town should be thrilled. Thrilled with the fact that they want to be here. They want to be engaged. Okay? No one led them here. No one said you should come and speak up. They got together on their own. They said, we're passionate about this. This is something we believe in. This is something we want to be heard. And they came out here and they were heard. They spoke. And when I see that, you know, things on social media belittling that, saying that it's a gambit or a farce. My God, you are belittling what these kids, young adults are accomplishing. And I for one am really proud of them and everyone here should. Thanks so much.
Yes.
Karen Moran, 50 Merlot Way. Thank you all for having me during three meetings in a row. I think, or online, anywhere. Thank you to Dr. Willett for months and months of work on this budget. Please don't let uninformed comments, inaccuracies, rhetoric on social media, quite frankly, meanness on social media deter you from the small inroads that were made last night. Many of us saw it and were hopeful for a change, a slight change in the process. I think many of you, maybe six out of seven of you, agreed that the process is broken and we need some improvement. So please work together like you did last night for the better of this community. Thank you.
Go back to the room. Yes.
Good evening again. Mary Rose to Barrett, 37 Ryan Road. Just one comment the gentleman made that the Board of Education has to deal with the responsibility of what's happening. I think the Board of Education has done that. They presented to you what they think is necessary for our students. Any cuts to that is now on you. So choose wisely. Thank you.
Go back to the room. Go online. Back to the room. Online. Yes.
Cindy Davidson, 304 Black Truck Road. I will not speak as I will to my daughter. She is very passionate about our town, about politics and being involved in her community. And she dragged me here today because I wanted to be at home on Zoom in my jammies. I will say, this is the first year I think I have listened to or watched every Board of Education budget meeting. Full disclosure, I am a nurse here at the high school. What I am saying is my personal views. It has nothing to do with my employment here. It is not the views of any of the other nurses in the town. This is just a parent speaking. I listened to all the Board of Education meetings. I sometimes stayed up till 11 o'clock at night watching them. At night, we are at 5:30 in the morning. The Board of Education labored over their budget. I listened to the back and forth. Dr. Willett presented 11% increase and then presented, I believe, three or four renditions after that. And then the Board of Education liberated. But if we think social workers are important, then what can we cut over here? If we feel that the parents are important, what can we cut over there? They labored over this budget. It was not done quickly. It was not done easily. It was done incredibly thoughtfully and difficult. They did not come to this 7.34 budget with tight dreams and rainbows and sunshine and let's get everything we want. They came with what do we think should provide to our children? And the two things that came out very clearly in the budget meetings that I was able to listen to were that our Board of Education members are very concerned about the safety of our children in our schools and wanting and needing SROs to be in our schools to make sure our children are safe. They're also very concerned about the health and well-being of our students. You've heard many of our students talk about their struggles with anxiety, their struggles with social anxiety. Pre-COVID things were difficult. Post-COVID, they're much more difficult. I don't think our Board of Education is trying to put things into our budget that we don't need. And I want to thank every member of the Board of Education who stayed up till wee hours in the morning trying to come up with this budget. And I listened to your meeting on Tuesday and stayed up till almost 11 o'clock. And it's a difficult thing. And I want to thank you all for being on the town council and doing what you're doing. And thank the Board of Education members for what they're doing. I've heard positive and good things about the conversations that happened last night. And it gave me hope in this budget process for the first time. I have a vested interest in this town. I've lived here over 30 years. I've had four children go through the school system. I have a vested interest in the children in our town. I worked here. Full disclosure, I have a second job. Most every nurse in town has a second job. We're not getting rich working here. We almost all have second jobs because we can't live of what we make in the school system. We stay because we love these kids. We stay because we want to be here for these kids. So I would ask that as you go into your deliberations, and I apologize that we're starting your meeting way later, and you guys are probably going to be up way later than you want it to be, that the cooperation that existed last night continue forward and that be respectful that the Board of Education put together the budget that they believe they need to best meet the needs of our children. And thank you again to both the Board of Education members and the town council members for all the work that you're doing. And I hope every student this year, grab your parents to vote. My daughter dragged me here today. So all the students that have come out to speak, all the students that have felt as passionate about this, go home and unmute your parents, know what the record vote is, and then you text them, have you voted yet? And they say no, you text them every hour. The more, and I hope all you guys that have been out there doing, stay involved. Go to town council meetings, go to Board of Ed meetings, go to planning and zoning meetings. Get involved in your account where you're passionate. Because if you guys have been involved and you guys clean like we have been this week, things will get better. So my last thing is, I hope you hear. Thank you to all of the Board of Education members and to all of the town council members who have given hours to try to get this on the table. And I hope in the next week, we're going to see positive things come about and positive changes for our community. Thank you.
One, yes.
Good evening. Noel Phyllis DePietro. I also am a numbers person, even though I may teach music. And I wish the gentleman had stayed to engage in the conversation. Numbers are facts. And you've heard our officials present them. The argument was at one point, whatever percent is an increase. However, the state average that has been presented for schools, especially of our size, the school classifies every town by a DIRK. Other DIRKs in schools are getting higher percentage than tall. We are not staying in line with DIRKs, other schools of our classification. 3% was the average, 1.7 or whatever it is that year, zero is below that. We have underfunded the school. 1.7 is not a positive. Especially when we consider all the things it takes. The majority of a budget for school tends to be just to keep the lights on at times. My electric bill has gone up. I imagine the schools has gone up. It's gone up more than 1.7%. My house has gone up more than 1.7%. The insurance has gone up more than 1.7%. It is very blindsided to look at something just as plainly as that. We need to look more deeply at the budget and the data. It's an ignorant way to look at the data. I'd like to provide a thought that I wish our town would do a little bit better at publicizing the referendums. I feel at times we do not do enough to publicize them. The little sign on the town green is not enough. Other towns I have been a part of do a much better job at advertising it, whether it's through a nice mass email system, text message. A lot of towns are more modern than ours for sending out text messages. They let their officials put on social media that the town referendum is there. I don't see a lot of that in our town, the years that I've lived here. It is often just very kind of very like one little post. We don't let all that go out. I think we need to look at it that way to mass communicate, whether it's from us on our platforms, elected officials on social media, advertising it. But what about people that are not on social media? How are we reaching those residents? We have to think more clearly about why the Board of Ed drastically came up with that 7%. It wasn't because they want to give all these wishful things to the students. There was considerations. Maybe it was another SRO. Maybe it was for MTSS intervention because our students need intervention. Because it is a state mandate for students to have intervention and we are not doing it at the high school. We are missing things that other schools and our DIRKs have. There's a reason why they said 7% because we kicked the can down the road too long. And maybe this is the wrong year to bring some of that stuff in. But then we have to continue these conversations because I also last night was very proud to be a Tallinn resident. I tried to come up and kind of communicate with some of you guys. It was awesome. Last night was a much better representation of our town than the previous joint meeting that we had. The way we sat, we were much closer. Instead of being on opposite sides, being enemies, we were intermixed. The conversations were positive. I think being an educator, seating arrangements helped with that. I hope that we can continue this momentum because I think it has been a positive change in the connection between the community that we find a way to take this, no matter how we get through it, to continue this for next year. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room? Line. Go back to the room. Yes.
Good evening. Joel Lopez, 30 Crystal Ridge Drive. I know I spoke here a couple of, not here, but at the town hall a couple of days ago. I'm not going to repeat what I said. But oh, by the way, my opinion here and my comments here are not anything to do with my position on the Planning Zone Commission. So they're totally in my opinions and my thoughts. The only thing I'm going to talk about here is we had Andy come up here a few minutes ago, talk and said a great, made a great point, talked about how this town is being divided whenever we have these discussions. And for someone to come up here and say, hey, Mr. Willett is a guy that's corraling people, come here. I never even met this man. By the way, Joel Lopez, nice to meet you, Mr. Willett. All right. And to accuse students here of coming here and being corralled to say something, make their opinions. Why do they do that? It's fear. They know what you're capable of. And they can know your future. So that's all. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Line. Back to the room. Line. Back to the room one more time. Line one more time. All right. That all entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved to second.
Right, discussion. All those in favor say aye. You? All right, that brings us to item five on our agenda, consideration of the town council's proposed FY 2025, 2026 budget. I would suggest that I'll have town manager walk us through what he has for us tonight. And then I would suggest that we have a brief recess before the rest of the breaks or opportunities to coffee if so desired. So turn that over to town manager Brian Cole. I can't hear you, Brian.
Sorry. I have a double mute feature here. Good evening, everybody. So we're back here. We have many scenarios to go through and discuss. Jacob, if you'd like me to put any scenarios forward, I'm happy to. We have a scenario that matches pretty close to what we discussed last night, as I can't even keep track of the nights. Last night, and I'm happy to have Yolita go through that scenario if you'd like. And I believe if she could share her screen, we can put it back up there. If not, no worries. We stand ready to do what you guys deliberate.
Yes, and it would be beneficial if Yolita could share her screen and swap us through.
I'm trying to make Yolita a co-host. That's it.
Good evening. Let me know if you can hear me and you can see my screen.
Yes and yes.
Yes, yes, perfect.
Can you launch the screen so that we can read the numbers?
Sure.
That's better. We'll back.
Okay. So what I've done is updated some numbers here from the manager's proposed budget. What do you see right now? This is what we proposed. This is what in the proposed manager's budget. 2826 mil rate, the same amount of amount to be raised by taxation. Few modifications has been made in the next, I'm going to scroll down and I'm going to show the other piece of information. What we did, we included $300,000 for ECS money. We did updated collection rate, 99.1. In addition to that, Assessor provided the depreciation motor vehicle values, which is from $15 million, it dropped to $14,271,600. So that slightly went down. And this is what I did. I did go and I updated those numbers. So if you can see it, the top of it. So the top information right here, it is all related to the grant list. In this number, the number 14 million, it's included, all the same deductions. And we applied 99.1 collection rate. And by not changing any expenditures, neither revenues, keeping the same proposed budget number, we're coming up with 27.85 mil rate, which is a lower by 0.41. Which is a lower by zero point forty one. Do you have any questions?
I do.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilor.
So just getting to twenty seven point eight five, that was done now.
We included three hundred thousand in ES ECS money.
Yep.
We planning to get. We did also in changed collection rate from ninety nine to ninety nine point one. In addition to that, in the grant list, we included the depreciation of motor vehicle. That was approved, fourteen million, two hundred seventy, one thousand, six hundred. That's the only changes has been made here in this screen. So we kept the same increase for town, the same increase proposed for BOE and CIP.
Thank you.
Hi, Dave Councilor, you have a question?
Yeah, I was just going to wonder, wonder when you done presenting, if you can email it to the town.
Yes, yeah, that, that could be done as soon as you can after presentation. That would be very helpful. Any other questions? Yes.
So. Yolita, were we not able to work in anything similar to what we talked about with the Board of Ed last night? Even if it's not exactly the same, something that we can, something similar.
So we did have a conversation this morning and I don't know if the superintendent would like to share.
Sure, I can. Can I just ask a question? Can people at home see?
I don't know, people.
Soon they can.
Walt, I can't see it. I can just see the agenda.
Let's, I'm gonna just try something here real quick. She's just got the sharing, but I want to make sure you have it. I'm going to stop sharing for a minute and then Yolita, if you could just do it again or share again.
I can see it.
Now we can see it.
We can see it.
Just want to make sure that that was able to be seen. Yes, and you're asking me, we did have, I reached out to the town today. And there's an option here that I think would be helpful and we talked about it last night. And there's an opportunity and I, and I think council members, board members felt good about it. There is in fiscal year twenty eight, a large capital project that could involve the boilers and that's what we talked about. And so that capital project, the allocation from the town side potentially using the Board of Ed use of account. Would be about three hundred and eleven thousand. So what could accommodate that capital request in fiscal year twenty eight? But also still provide money to offset the higher electrical costs for next year, fiscal year twenty six for the board. Would be to instead of using three hundred and eighty thousand of that money. Instead use three hundred thousand of that money. So both things could still be accomplished. So. The potential opportunity here would be using three hundred K from the UISF fund to offset the electrical charges. And help offset some of the negative impacts of the insurance increase in the Board of Ed budget. And then consideration, and I'm not sure on the town side. If you had decided this is something you're interested in or not for council, but that one hundred and eighty eight from the TMS auditorium seats. Allowing ERF in the third order of this coming year, fiscal year twenty six to handle that. And instead using those funds to offset the educational technology initiative, which would also allow the Board of Ed. An offset to balance out that insurance. So that is what we had talked briefly about today. And again, ultimately what happens here is at the discretion of the council. I appreciate you thinking about that.
Let me clarify. It went from the proposal from last night was three hundred eighty thousand after discussing with our finance department revising it down to three hundred thousand.
Right, my, my respectful request to be three hundred thousand so that funds could be used in fiscal year twenty eight. For that, for the potential to, just.
Thank you.
And the. Potential of. The, the money that was going to be used to replace the seats in the auditorium. Use that to fund the tech initiative and then when you have access to using the ECS money in the third quarter. That would then go to funding the seats in the auditorium that were originally budgeted?
The E, ER.
Oh, sorry, ER.
Yeah, educational reserve. So because ERF funds are not available until the third quarter after the audit. And if, and this is an if, but if there were end of year funds, which typically, you know, that range I posted, you know, point three hundred percent median and about point eight nine over those years. So if there is an end of year balance, that balance can be rolled over to the educational reserve fund. That happens after the audit in the third quarter. And because that's too late to help offset this budget, something that could be done to help would be to swap those. So the ERF is utilized for that, but the capital request fiscal year twenty six of one eighty eight is then instead of used for the auditorium seats. The ERF will handle is used towards the ed tech initiative. And so that will help then offset the board of the budget. And as spoken about last night could really help make a huge difference with respect to staffing. And the associated things like clubs, which are really connected to the stipends that are paid for them and things like that.
Thank you.
So. Can I clarify?
Yes.
So, so what we're talking about is making three hundred or four hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars immediately available. But not, not doing, not engaging, not doing the seeds. And then if the ECS. Or the ERF funds, when they become available, then swapping that out and then using that if it's sufficient for the seeds.
The, the, on the board side, the ERF would be utilized for this. So the town wouldn't need to do that.
Wouldn't need to do it.
And they would allow the hundred eighty to instead be used to offset that, which. It, it would avoid the tragic situation of because of a high insurance cost, laying off staff and hitting things that maybe we wouldn't need to do otherwise.
Okay, so you.
That, that won't, we have a pretty good record overall of insurance, you know, in the long span. That probably will be something that we face the same way.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. So. We're not talking about, we're just talking about additional revenue that would have been used for something else. Is now going to be used for, we're not, we're not recognizing that revenue in the current. Upcoming fiscal year, not the current year, but the upcoming fiscal year. We're using revenue that we didn't anticipate having. Is that what I'm understanding?
We're using revenue that was part of a UISF account that dates back ten years that was set up under an ESO agreement that no longer exists. So this is a set aside that had a specific purpose that could be utilized for.
So this is using use of fund. Portion of the use of fund that we, that twelve million dollar balance, we're going to apply some of that now.
Well, that use of fund was a special set aside thing.
That's not part of the.
So I don't know, you know, your general fund balance and this are slightly different because use of has a special agreement that has conditions. That have to do with board in town collaboration on this. So essentially it's there to use the board of Ed side of it. That, that. Is the board's funds are able to be used in these ways. It makes sense to you. So you'll, I guess I'm.
Yolita, is that a different fund or is that what we call the use of?
No, this is a different, this is utility, utility fund, internal service fund.
So it's not, I'm sorry, it's the what?
And, and we do have a two assigned fund balances, one for town and one for BOE. And what the superintendent is referring here is the portion to assign BOE available funds.
So those are basically tied up in a fund that we weren't going to use, but now we're going to use a portion of it.
Correct.
And so just to clarify, Yolita, if these things. Do not increase taxes or the mill rate, if these approaches, right? Any more than sort of the.
Right, this is outside the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor, you have a question? Are you good?
Oh, I think it's a great idea. Thank you. I should have said thank you early to Dr. Willet.
Thank you guys.
I was just, my question I guess is, or maybe it's too early to tell. Does that bring down the number more? Like the mill rate, does that help lower it at all?
Is that the ultimate calculation or assuming?
Right, or is it additional?
Or is it additional reduction?
Or is it just?
This is what the, the BOE increase is two point nine nine. It won't change that number. So the funds we're using for electricity, it's from utility fund, internal services.
The two point nine nine is a spending increase, right?
Correct.
So we're not changing that because we're not increasing spending, but we are, you're increasing revenue, which then reduces the mill rate.
No, we're not making any transfers to the, to make, to move it in general fund. What we're correct, because we do have a separate fund that we are charged, we can charge just electricity bills. So what happens when we set the budget, we do have set utility expenditures. And we transfer it depending what we are estimating. We transfer to that fund and then electricity bills are coming, we charging to that utility fund. So this is like a separate internal service fund. So.
One thing, Yolita, the first part of what you've talked to us before Dr. Willet spoke. The, assuming the ninety nine point one percent tax collection rate, you factored in the, the, the motor vehicles based on what council had done previously. That had the effect of lowering the mill rate, correct?
Correct, correct. And three hundred thousand ECS.
Oh, right, okay. Got it, okay. And this is, got it. I understand. Thank you.
And so these, just to clarify, these other adjustments we're talking about here, and we're not, Dr. Willet's discussion, we're not changing, we're not increasing or decreasing expenses. Or reallocating funds has no impact on the mill rate you're showing us here.
Correct.
I understand. Okay, so we're, we're at the twenty seven.
Yes, Jacob.
Yes.
Has a clarification. Yolita, if we're factoring in the use of the use of funds, does that reduce the mill rate further?
No, that's what we just, I think that's what the question was.
So that is, so that's a, that's used, that's just a completely separate thing.
Correct.
Okay.
Yolita, do we have or could we create a view of this scenario without the Board of Education suggestions? The reason why I want to see that is I want to understand like how much of this decrease from the prime, from the town manager's proposal. Is from like the three hundred thousand ECS.
It's all of it.
Yeah, it's all of it.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm trying to understand what the difference, like what, what, what kind of benefit did we get from the Board of Education? How much of that? Minus.
Okay.
What the town manager bought.
Reduction.
What about it?
It's from what we talked about last night versus some of these other.
I think it's entirely.
Motor vehicle.
Oh, what? Okay. Because that would, that plays into that math as well. I just want to see that broken out. I have a little trouble understanding. It's bad.
Got it.
So can we take a recess and I can come back to this? Or because I, you want me to do the calculation, correct?
Yeah, I.
It's my understanding, you wanted me to reduce, reduce by three hundred K BOE budget. And also, actually that's it. That would be, that's the only change.
Right, sorry, say that again, Yolita.
I said the only thing would change, if you want me to do a calculation. What would look like if we reduce by three hundred K, right? The usage of the utility fund, that's my understanding, or my, if you can repeat then, Jacob. Sorry.
Yes, and the, and the ERF. Transfer or because that, that.
That, that probably might fit here.
Yeah.
Yes, that would not happen until following year and we don't know what that, it would not affect this, this year.
I'm sorry, so the whole hundred eighty seat thing, I'm sorry, hundred eighty thousand seat placement. That wasn't in this, that wasn't in next year's budget at all. That was a capital.
It's a, it's a, it's a for capital of next year. And so since these would also be considered a capital expense, because these kinds of things have been in the past. That instead of doing it, receipts there or the auditorium seat, they would on the ed tech initiative cap as a capital expense. And then when the ERF funds get cleared, quarter three of next year, on the board side, those funds would be used on the audit. So it's, it's completing the auditorium and it's allowing for an offset. Because ERF funds, even if they existed at the end of this year, can't be applied until the third quarter. So it's blocks those two.
This time I were pulling in more revenue in third quarter because you weren't considering the ERF fund in third quarter budget. But now we're considering.
The ERF always gets, whenever there's an end of year balance. It can't be transferred until the audit. So let's say, for instance, this year seventy six thousand at the end of this year. That seventy six thousand is not actually available until the audit is complete. So right now is when you make the official requests and then ultimately the response. But it's too late to use it for anything like, you know, to offset that particular, right? So the way.
Off set last year.
Yeah, you can't, but like this fiscal year service couldn't have offset. We were building that sphere twenty five budget. We could not set it this because the. But this gives us a way of utilizing the ERF funds to make a positive impact on this year twenty sixth budget by having that capital expense instead of fight to the educational technology. Technology issue. So then the board budget doesn't have to do that this year. So it can be used to sustain and keep staff. So then you're getting both projects done.
I'm still very confused because first you're telling me you can't use the fund, but now we're going to use the fund. And. You can't use the fund from last fiscal year because it's not, it's not, it's not available until the audit's complete. Right? So when you said, I guess that seventy seven thousand, was that prior fiscal year or in the current?
Yeah, so I was using it as an example, but let's just for a sake of example, say that at the end of year this year, we have. A hundred and eighty eight thousand. Let's just use that. And let's say end of year balance.
The end of this current, current fiscal year.
This fiscal year twenty five, right? That would be maybe, you know, that would be set aside and when the audit is complete next year around this time. That one eighty eight becomes available. When that one eighty eight comes available and the board has that transfer to the ERF official. That money would then be used for the TMS auditorium secret. Then it would be executed on the, on the board side.
In next fiscal years.
Next, you would probably be sometime in the summer, around June, something because, you know, that money would come available probably in March, April.
Okay.
Then it would be actionable this time.
So again, did your budget consider that we're going to get? The, the budget, because you said there's this other tech, this other tech.
So the ed tech initiative right now is in the board's funding and has to be funded because we skipped it now for. Probably eighteen months and it's creating issues. It's like when you had a capital replacing.
Okay, I get it. So let me stop you for a second. But the seat, the seats were also in your, so you had the tech initiative, which you had, you're gonna, it's in the current thing, we're gonna fund that. And then you also had the seats, replacement of the seats in the current budget, but you weren't considering ERF fund, current your budget. So that money was coming from somewhere else.
Right, so the seats are a capital. Yet that reserve fund or the ed tech initiative was embedded in the operating.
So you're moving the ed tech initiative to a capital expense.
We are switching, we're saying because of the timing, make the educational technology initiative a capital expense, which there is a history of doing that. And whenever we bought labs and things like that, those were capital expenses. So we're taking and making that the capital expense and we're making the TMS auditorium seat replacement. We're taking that chance that will last an end of year monitor that we would apply at that point.
That's also a capital expense. So moving an operating expense to a capital expense. I mean, you're taking additional funding that we weren't considering applying that. For the other capital.
ERF can be used for capital expenses too. It's just that there's never been enough ERF money for huge capital expenses because sometimes capital expenses, for instance.
I get it.
Millions, you're never going to get enough. So ERF always had a category for capital expense. It's just not able to handle large magnitude of capital expenses. This one, it has a chance of.
I, I get it, but would you see somewhere, somewhere there's either some expense disappearing or there's some revenue showing up. In your, in your modification of what you had originally proposed. So we're trying to understand.
Because we don't have to spend it on ed tech initiative. In capital, we will receive those technical technological items for next year. That those funds now can be used to not lay off staff.
Okay, so it's the those same funds you were gonna use, it's now a capital expense, not an operating expense, so that operating expense money goes to fund. Can I?
Well, salaries or something. Right, that's exactly.
Not in other words, you weren't planning on using E R F this year to fund either seats. Or your educational initiative in the budget that was sent over to the.
That's because it was requested of the town's capital, but E R F, no, because we can't always count on that and the timing of that would make that.
Yeah.
Impossible, it would make it moot, it would not work because you couldn't buy them until the third quarter and you need them now.
Yeah.
So that one eighty eight would normally have been in the next fiscal year, you know, pushing it into. Current, and when I say the next fiscal year, not the twenty five, twenty six, it would have normally been twenty six, twenty seven fiscal year. But now we're we're gonna push it into the twenty five, twenty six fiscal.
It would have been in the fiscal year. The E R F funds would be available just for your twenty six as of now, the third quarter one. But you can't.
Prior years, the E R F funds would be available.
In June thirty, right, June thirtieth, we end of this year, right, right? And let's say we had a hundred eighty thousand that we had, we then wanted to transfer to Europe. It can't be transferred until the third quarter. So let's say like, you know, I was using the E R F.
The wall, you're you're going surface on me because. We were pretty clear on this before, we like he's like, like Jacob said, before we weren't considering that E R F fund in your budget. Because. Normally, that's that's not used until the following fiscal year, so it's not available, you're saying it's not available till third quarter. But normally, it's not in your budget because it's not available till the third quarter, you don't really know what it is. But now you're gonna anticipate, you're gonna get this money, so you're really gonna use the money. In next fiscal year that, under normal circumstances, we've always fallen this year after it becomes available. Joe, I think it's a switch on time.
If it's not clear, and I could happen to sit and talk to you another time about it, but the basic premise. Is that you have a capital expense that the board or the town council is willing to take, right? That auditorium replacement. If instead it takes these items of technology, we will have them for the beginning of next year. And when that one eighty eight, say, or whatever E O A fund becomes available, we could then apply that to the project of those chair or the chairs in the auditorium. Both will get done, but because we can't buy those technologies right now, but E R F that might have, might happen. That it makes it impossible for us to have the era since it's an operator if we don't do this. Can I, so we can talk about it more, I'm not, my intention is not to insert, but I apologize if it's not clear, I'm trying to be as clear as I can.
You're swapping the two, you're swapping an operational expense.
Cannot wait until that point in time, maybe the whole thing forces.
Because the technology needs to be done now.
Needs to be done now, which is why, right?
And those E R F funds are not available until next year.
That until next year.
But the seats can wait till next year.
The seats of the two, we had to wait until that point in year to work on the seats.
We could.
That would be, yeah, because we don't, it helps us mitigate the loss of staff right now.
Correct.
The loss of the clubs, the sports, the loss of the nurses.
You prioritize the the tech over the seats.
As an option, doing this allows us to avoid reducing some of that stuff that would be most painful, especially if you think about it, because it's tragic that it would happen. If there's a high insurance and we don't offset it.
And if you don't get the E R F money that you think you're gonna get, you don't do the seats.
Right.
You just don't do the seats. So we don't, yeah, you just don't do it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sacrifice.
Sorry.
True.
Yeah, yeah, but it sounds like you're still gonna try to do both, you might not.
We're gonna try to do both because it was in the plan to do both, we tried to do both, and if we didn't have enough.
You're gonna sacrifice the seats.
I just want to ask, yeah, so that was ultimately, thank you, but uh just. Do you ever, so the E R F, is it ever, is it ever factored in to your budget, right, like, is it ever, or is it there as like? Your rainy day, your savings. Usually it's there as a safety for something that occurs, but in right, you know, like. I'm not asking about what you're asking. Count on it for that budget right in front of us, but any money that's already solidly in there. Yep. We can utilize as an offset. Okay.
So maybe you'll let you'll let a good kind of offer their opinion of this too um. Well, you see any, is there any like inherent risk? That would surface for switching these two allocated money and waiting for this, like would something surface that makes you? Kind of nervous or you're lit a really nervous, like that's what I would like.
The risk, and that's the right, you know, we'll always take a risk in anything into, but the risk could be that we didn't have enough at the end of. This fiscal year to to do the project. Like if we ended up with seventy six, like in the last fiscal year. Then um we wouldn't have enough to do the project, so then we would have to try to figure it out or come back to the table with that. But the objective is to try to get through the space and time where, you know, we would have to tragically make more eliminations than otherwise we might have had to do.
Okay.
You know, so it's we're taking that risk, but it's worth it, we're not losing staff, clubs, you know, we can have less than.
The juice is worth the squeeze.
And it's a way we could do it without negative impact to the year process.
Yo Lita, do you agree with that? Or are you a little more careful, or is Doctor Will, do you agree with that cautiousness?
Yeah, so we spoke today this morning, I asked specific questions, because as you know, I just, you know, took this job, so I needed some understanding of. Past practices and, you know, how things handled, and I think we hashed it out this morning. And we on the same page um with the proposal with the superintendent. I'm comfortable with that.
Thank you. Uh do you have an additional question, Councilor?
No, I just was gonna say question is.
Okay. Any additional questions on this, if not, I would ask Gilletta to send us a copy of this um and then have a recess.
She gonna send us just this? Oh, she gonna send us this while she works on me.
Oh, oh, you wanna see everything, there you go. So we have uh all different scenarios that uh Jacob asked before. Um so at the top of it, you're gonna find all different scenarios and it has a label, what that means. Uh these are original ones that Jacob I sent it before. On the bottom, if you scroll down, you're gonna see the scenarios with the change of motor vehicle. Right, uh number. And it has um, you know, all different overall budget increase, decrease, cuts and all that, all different scenarios. And what are you gonna find, I think, the most helpful? Um I've been including the. Impact on all those three levels, right? The low, median and high on the taxpayers, on the presidential and commercial. So you're gonna see all these differences, how much increase or decrease um comparing to twenty nineteen grant list tax bills. And if you go up, you're gonna see one rate, these are the the increases and these are differences, but on the bottom, you're gonna see. How the small change just, you know, into motor motor vehicle reflected that on the bottom. So we can walk through this spreadsheet when we come back, but I hope this is gonna be helpful somewhere to to look at the difference scenarios. Is this is helpful, not helpful? Do you want me to sum this all?
Can we talk about some additional items while we, before we go on?
Yeah.
Break so that they have time to take a look at it?
If if councils don't have an objection, maybe it would be best if we just have a. We look at this and anything that councils want to propose can be submitted and then. It would sense. Recession after.
Yeah, or I'm 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 amenable to doing it either way, I just didn't know how whether they needed additional time or, I mean, I can do, I can do anything that you guys want to do in respect to the recess.
Well, I'm just kind of thinking maybe people want to recess to think of questions to ask.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
So let's all entertain a motion to recess.
So move to second, okay, all those in favor.
Bye. Here recess. I'm calling back the town council from recess. Um to continue our discussion of proposed budget, I'm solving it up to counselors. Uh. Things or ask questions, the council you check.
Yes, um. So. I'm not very swift at full time doing this, so. Jacob, you know, Alex and Joey, you can help me along. First of all, again, the student is still here, the family members that are here and everybody that's still online, sorry if that break took a little longer, but. Um, I know. The four of us had a good deliberation downstairs. So this is. So you'll listen what she presented. I'd like, we'd like to, well, it shouldn't be for all of us. I suppose to keep what she presented. Um we also. I also, I don't know if we proposed Dr. Will let's um thing in this. Well, I'm not sure.
Go have you, whatever you want, just read it out.
Okay. So so that I think that was a um good thing. That I'd like to also put in. And then I do my, I'd also propose uh fifteen, the fifteen thousand dollars for the big. The um full time coordinator, take that out of the recreation fund. Um make no changes to the three um overall three point zero three percent. Even the board at the number of proposed and the town managers um. Towns, so that was three oh three. I also would like to propose um. It's really might have to help my bigger is. Using sixty thousand dollars. Uh we'll get the Fitch study, I know it hasn't been seen to the public yet. We got got that and there's a lot of um good information, so it's just a general sixty thousand dollars and reduce some capital out of that. And that way it gives the council, the manager and the fire department to figure out how to use that amount. Just they can use that starting in January of next year. So, Derek, say that right?
Yeah, you know, just add a little bit to that, I think the proposal um that I'd like to propose with Councilor Gudicak is to. We have two hundred twenty six thousand dollars of unassigned fund balance that we're gonna use for our one time capital expenditures. Our proposal would be to push out sixty thousand dollars worth of items to next year. Hold sixty thousand as a reserve for potential recommendations um based off of. The fire uh emergency services study that was done. Um it's a little bit of an awkward conversation to have because it hasn't been released to the public yet, but I know the counselors have seen it. There are some items in there that are in general concern and we'd like to be able to act quickly on it. So even having a little bit of money in case uh it's needed to implement those recommendations would be good uh to have recommending that.
And then how how much was that again?
Six zero.
Six zero, okay.
Sixty thousand as a starting point.
But to keep the overall amount of fund balance used the same.
Yeah. Yeah, that's it, that's what I.
Can I just ask a clarifying? Just so I can understand what you.
Yeah, of course.
So um. It I just, I can sum it up and you can tell me if I have it right, so you basically um the town manager's proposed budget. With like the ninety nine point one percent tax collection rate, the the three hundred thousand E C S and then the motor vehicle tax numbers that they did.
Yeah.
And then the. Three hundred thousand from the user and. Uh. The the seats, the the E R F money from like the swapping of the seats in the ed tech.
Yes, okay, you followed me great.
Plus, and then.
And then the sixty thousand, and then, sorry, I know there's a lot of them.
Oh, yeah.
And then. Use um. What was it? Fifty, uh the rec position.
Oh, yeah, I agree, I agree, yeah.
And what was the position amount?
Fifteen thousand.
Thousand, it might be give or take, I don't know, you let up, but.
Yeah, no, I think that's.
I know. Probably not the most preferred from the town side, but at least again.
Yep.
And you also want to say that I think we're taking a lot of risks on these numbers as well. And I also asked a lot of questions of the town manager, which he forwarded to the staff. Kristen Jacob had that and hopefully your caucus has got it, I know. Uh we did, because I did it.
Yep.
So hopefully that information is helpful, I can also include that in the minutes of. Because it touches base on the the bond rated. You know, they're gonna have to probably use more next year of that and. Just overall, I tried to turn the stone over, we talked about, found out information that we could um. Maybe delay the tax assessment.
Step it in.
Step it in.
Right, that was, that was a comprehensive answer and it was clear that the state didn't intend for people to try to do that.
Wasn't super excited.
Yeah, so.
How to lose your tax assessment two weeks, yeah.
We tried on that and then there were some other options for senior um quarters that should really look, be looked at the next council. Because it's not like Jason said that would be for more of next year that would input taxes, so I wish we knew about that sooner. Um but overall, I just want to really say that I tried and I looked at everything, so I really. Hopefully this uh will look at supported because I think it touches on just about every department in our town and we listen to all the emails and. We just hope it passes on the first time, yeah. This is what the council desires.
Point of clarification, so what's the no rate? Then that it's what you went to calculate, we're staying in that revised no rate of two seven two six, is that what it was?
Twenty seven point five. Might go down ever so slightly if you will.
You let, what was, what was that revised number that considered the three hundred E C F grant and the and the uh ninety nine point one percent and the motor vehicle tax adjustment?
It was what I presented, twenty seven point eighty five.
Uh Yolita, I just have a question, um on the ninety nine, which I agree with using the the ninety nine point one percent. Is that, do we arrive at that because that's like an average of the last few years' actual collection rate, how do we get to the, you know, the extra point one or? Yeah.
So. So this question, uh then the question came up, what I did, I looked back in an actra and I took the last three years. So when you look at the proper property tax collections overall, including prior year collections, the rate are higher. Ninety nine point five, ninety nine point uh six, however, when we developing the budget and looking at the grant list, we really need to focus only. On the current tax collection rate. And then I looked at that, it's only ninety nine point zero. However, again, because we had a greater collection rate on overall property taxes, we taking this kind of chance, right, and putting ninety nine point one. Because. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, so so basically what you're saying is you felt that like a ninety nine point five or whatever was too risky. Um but the ninety nine point one is um, you know, there's always some level of risk with what we're doing, but that's more palpable.
Correct, because looking, looking just in the actual some budgeted for the few years, prior year collection comes higher. And then we have some additional collections for uh then um events assessor does review motor vehicle supplements, supplemental. The vehicle come comes on a list, so we have some additional revenue, so I think taking ninety nine point one, that's the best we can do.
I did, we didn't want to go higher, Chris, because keep in mind, it's gonna be a brutal tax year. And there is some concern. You know, that that people are gonna be later and slower, so uh we felt safe going to ninety nine one.
Understood, thank you.
Welcome.
This is to clarify, we have made a motion for the for the changes, so there's motion on the floor, but it needs to be seconded, is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, so motion is seconded by Councilor Newton. Uh so I would open enough for a discussion with the changes suggested by Councilor Gudicak.
I just have a question. Um. I think I have, I have a problem question, so just to clarify, so you're, so you take sixty thousand out of capital. Is that what the proposal was and then add the sixty in in participation? Okay.
And if you guys saw the study, there's a lot of.
Yes, 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 there's some days, there's, okay.
People that know the Fitch study, Jacob uh touched on it, uh hoping that we'll get it in April, um that people can see what we're talking about or. Or something, you know, like the Fitch is supposed to come out, so.
Yeah.
Um. But yeah, that's what it is done.
Okay.
The intent would be to be budget neutral essentially with that suggestion.
Starting in January.
Yeah, I mean, okay, okay. Um. Where are we right now as far as being unassigned fund balance, is it like? Yeah, now my brain's gonna go, who's five hundred thirty something, is that?
Twenty five.
Five twenty seven, okay, I was close at least. Um.
My question is with the changes that. We made that we kind of adopted based on the conversation we had the other joint meeting last night. Does that satisfy? And if the chair is comfortable with me asking a question, Dr. Willett, I just want to get that up. Out there first, but. Are we satisfying the things that we discussed last night? Because I know there was a list that we discussed and they're like. Teachers clubs and those would be the priorities. And then there's like pathway programs and then um the additional S R was on the list too. Have. What with the changes that we've made now, is that satisfying that? List of things that we were talking about. As far as what the board was talking about for reduction. Because I was thinking it was somewhere around. Seven hundred and fifty thousand.
I believe you're referring to the figure that Ms. Galichan presented that about seven hundred fifty. I think the original one I had presented was eighty higher than than.
That's not about. That sounds about right.
So um we would be able to do less of it, but at least there would be. There would be some. Some offset. It's appreciated. Wouldn't be as much as Ms. Galichan had stated and it's eighty lower than originally stated, but it's appreciated as something. And the goal, although I'm I don't want to speak entirely for the board because they're not here, they would have to. But it would be, you know, my recognition would be, you know, staff. Clubs and then go there. Focus on those first because those would be the most impactful negative.
Okay, okay, thank you. I think that's that you're you're pretty straightforward.
Thank you for.
Uh, Council Ryan, if you had a question.
Uh, yeah, I guess comments question. So um. Uh, I'll start by saying I agree with uh what Counselor Udocheck has put forward. Um obviously. You know, I you know, we all come to the table with like different perspectives and different things, and I would love for the Board of Education's budget to. Be higher and and to receive more. Um but I also understand that this. Year is particularly difficult because of the impact of the revale. So I um. You know, I uh appreciate, you know, your willingness to to, you know. Work together to try to, you know, arrive at doing the best we can for the town, right? None of it's going to be great. But I um I appreciate that. Uh I guess the only question I would have, and I I think Counselor Butler maybe touched on it is. Whether we just want to explore using any additional unassigned fund balance to bring down the mill rate, not to add to the budget to just. Bring down the rate. It's just. I'm just putting it out there. I support what Counselor Udocheck said, but I'm just talking about not to add to the budget to bring down for us, that's.
Yes, could I piggyback off of that quickly? It's it's gonna full circle answer this question. So. I I agree with you. I think I would, I'm sure Jen would love it, but I'd like to coin it as like the Galichan goal. If we were working with each other for like the next five years, I would come out and say like, well, what's the Galichan goal? And that's bringing all of us. To an equal pie. Um and then narrowing the scope as we go on and if. Things don't pass, which is not what we want. I had asked that question to Joe and he might be able to. As far as using more of the unassigned fund balance to lower the mill rate and. Jacob assisted me in that too, understanding it. A little bit better, yeah.
I'll I'll turn it over to um. Yolita, if that's all right. And I know you've had. I think Council Gudicak has submitted a question upon fund balance. Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Um I I think I did provide it and we included a slide um for. Just last last night meeting about the fund balance. And uh what we don't want to do and what is important to remember. If we do use fund balance, let's say. We proposing to use uh five hundred. Twenty-seven rate or six hundred thousand. What we need to make sure, and I know this is a very variable, right, very estimated, that the following year. We can recoup that money. So what that means, we, you know, uh as we budget. We need to make sure that we can we can put that surplus back. Because with the bond, I talked to uh our financial advisor about it multiple times and asked multiple questions that was given to me. By uh Council Vice Chair, by uh Council uh Udocheck. And ask specific those questions. What is the risk? And I think primarily concern that even though we staying in that in that threshold. What our policy dictates, but we need to ensure that we can recoup that back. To our unassigned fund balance and actually show good financial stability. When we use too much, it doesn't show very good picture to the bond ratings and they. You know, there's no such a template to say we have ten questions and they're gonna rate on those. It's changing. Everything is changing. So but these two things have been mentioned to me and. Uh by the our financial advisor and I want to just advise you on that. But it's your recommendation what you're gonna decide.
Sure, and I and I appreciate that, Yolita. Um let me just ask this question for my benefit and maybe anyone that. Just try to understand it more. So we have. Um I I don't I don't have the exact number. Above the.
So so based on what we had you had given us um. As of June of. Twenty-four, which was the last audited number. We had twelve point three million. And that is approximately eighteen point seven five percent of the fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six uh year budget. So the budget's being proposed. At sixty-five point six million dollars and I'm rounding up to sixty-five point six million dollars. It's actually a little bit less than that. So that's eighteen point seven five percent our. We're using five twenty-seven, which would get us to seventeen point nine five percent. Which is still almost a full percentage point above our policy of seventeen percent. Um which is still two points above the recommendation of ten to fifteen percent that we say the bonding agencies look for. To maintain our rating.
So if I can interrupt, um it's a good observation. However. The fund balance on assigned fund balance is calculated on a GAAP basis. So the expenditures that what you're referring that it's the budgetary expenditures. Our gap expenditures are for FY twenty for sixty-nine million, nine hundred thirty-six, eight two two. So and that if you do the calculations, it's a different, you're gonna get the a percentage seventeen point, I think, six. That they have in the book.
Okay. So that I'm I'm sorry, what what is that percentage?
Seventeen point six.
We're still, we're still in really good shape then.
Correct, but remember this year we're using. Already we're using fund balance, unassigned fund balance three hundred. We're proposing the following year to use fund balance again. So if we have a good year this year. And we can recoup that three hundred back, it's gonna show for us as we go bond this year, right? We have a plan to go bonding.
Just to follow up on what I was saying. Um so I appreciate what you're saying. Um. I guess I I just um I want us to be mindful that I feel like. In the past, we've been really hesitant to use the funds understandably. But we haven't even needed to, we didn't even need to use them at all or as much as we were budgeting. What last time? Because our our investments came in higher and things like that. So I just want to make sure. That in a difficult, you know, an obviously difficult year because of the revale. We are being as realistic as we can be. About what we can do to help taxpayers uh burdens, right? So I just don't, I I I just wouldn't want us to be in this situation and I understand that this is, you know, it's not a crystal ball. We can't be sure where. We have, we where we were overly um conservative about how much money we could use and we could have helped taxpayers more. So I guess my point is just uh it it we've been hesitant before understandably, and then it's turned out we didn't need to use what we thought we were gonna have to.
So can I? Can I comment?
Sure.
So I know we had this conversation last year and we went into several meetings with this conversation last year and we even brought in the financial group advisor to come in and give us a presentation as to why it's an. It's an unwise idea. And I always like to use the example of common, you know, household expenditures. So let's say you go to buy a house. And you can afford a four hundred thousand dollar house with the revenue that you take in, the money that you're making yourself, but you want a five hundred thousand dollar house. So your mortgage only allows you to spend four hundred thousand. You say, well, I'm gonna still take the mortgage out for five hundred thousand because I want the nicer house. And I'm gonna use my savings to cover. The extra hundred thousand dollars that I have to pay in that mortgage. So in the first year, you burn through all your saves, which is your own assigned fund balance. At the end of the year, you still have that thirty-year mortgage that you now still have to pay and continue to have to pay. You don't have that money anymore. It's gone. So now you have to find another source for that money that you used up. That that is no longer there. So that's kind of what. Using the unassigned fund balance for recurring expenses, which is the thing that's gonna bring down your mill rate. If you use it for capital expenditures, for example, it's a one-time. Uh expenditure. Then it's okay because you're not gonna have that continuing expense year over year. And the financial organizations are gonna look at that and say you spent your money, your unassigned fund balance. On money that you have to spend every single year. Now you're now you're digging yourself into a hole, which makes you look financially unstable. As opposed to using it for a capital expenditure, which is a one-shot deal, or you pay down your debt. So if you wanted to pay down the debt, so you don't have future expenses. That makes sense too, because you're using the money wisely to help reduce your overall debt. But to use it just to reduce your mill rate. Uh on recurring expenses is a financially poor decision.
Even if we have a significant percentage above the recommended cushion?
Absolutely. Yes, so then you could use it for a capital expenditure to bring down. Bring down the recommend, bring down a lower rate. That makes perfect sense. Recurring expenses. Is a is a poor financial idea and the bond ratings are gonna look at that. You're using your money. That you're not gonna have again for expenses you're not continuing to do.
So from what I've read from S M uh M S. Or the. Though a a a bond rating doesn't like suddenly decrease, right? Like they they look at you, they give you a a notification. It's not like we do something one year and the next year our bond is down to double A or our bond rating is is suddenly decreased. From from the literature that I've read and I scoured the M M S R B website, which I didn't even know existed until a few days ago. So it. So I just want to make sure that I'm that I'm understanding this because I don't want us to be. I understand what you're saying and I agree with it. Um but I also want, don't want us to be. We've got our citizens, our taxpayers, right? It's this is our rainy day fund. It's pouring on them and we're saying, well. The umbrellas are really important to hold in reserve so the bond, you know, the bond agencies can be. Made happy. So I want to make sure that we are doing what we need to do. To mitigate the revale issue for them, which is a huge shift. And so if we were taking some of that fund balance to mitigate something like. You 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 know, some other capital expenditure that we were saying, okay, well, we wouldn't do this this year unless we could. Take this from unassigned fund balance. I and I would like to go further. I would like to eliminate some of the capital expenses. Um and or defer them so that we can even do more for the for the taxpayers. I'd really like to. I really like to reduce the mill rating. But would that be, if we could find something to say, we can, we can, if we took a little bit more of this, but we could put it against this. And stay above our seventeen percent goal, is that something that's acceptable?
Again, I'll leave it to one-time expense.
Okay.
Okay, I I so I say we may have.
Yeah, and also if I can add, I think um I just want to remind and 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 thank you very much, Council Joe. This is great explanation. It's like you, you just continue explaining very well. It's a one-time deal. Next year. Remember, we have tough year. It's gonna be tough here. And I'm gonna be working um. You know, uh working to look like uh next year's what that is gonna look like, how. How the budget, how the revenues, what we can plan, what we can estimate it. I ask our assessor to provide like percentages on the growth list, on Santini, on. Other properties and just look what that looks like. So I'm I'm just afraid that we're gonna be in the same situation next year. Just want to remind that very here and it's your recommendation, so.
Uh can I just follow up on that, Yolita? Just um that was one of my questions was gonna be um like we know, we don't know when Santini will be done, right? But we know that when they're done, or we anticipate that when they're done, that they'll they'll be the highest, they will receive the most property tax from from that, right? So um. Is it it and and I know, uh you know, I I talked with Brian and you talked to Jason and I get that these are very rough numbers. But you know, we're talking about, you know, nine hundred thousand plus that we might anticipate in. Tax revenue. And I'm not saying that we say we 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 project that we can get that, right? I get that it's flexible, but is there anything that? Are we allowed, does it make sense to consider that at all in terms of? You know, the money we're using from the side fund balance. If we anticipate that our revenue will be higher to help offset that in a future. Year, next year, the year after, or something like that.
Uh it well, if I can jump in here, um. I don't think at this point next year. Uh there'll be, you know. Fully up and running. Uh nor do nor do I expect the Starbucks either. I hope they're both on their way. Um but again, you saw the the round numbers that we were estimating. Um but I want to say before they're up and completely up or I we're at about. Two years, year and a half, two years from completely up. I do expect some people to be in there within the year.
Yep, and and I and I appreciate that and uh. Uh you know, I hear you and I and I won't push it further. Just to be clear, I you know, I I'm not suggesting that we anticipate we're gonna get nine hundred thousand more dollars next year. Um you know. You know, I'm just saying, do we anticipate that it'll be some amount more? And if you're saying that we're accurately projecting um or realistically projecting what our revenue will be next year, then 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 understood. So I I think that's what I hear you're saying.
We we are, we're 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 pretty confident in that. We've done the best we can in uh getting it as close as we can. Partaking it. But again, these are these are unpredictables. We're doing the best, not an exact science.
Yep, thank you.
Just a quick comment, if I could, it's Jason. You guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
You know, at full value for that, the Santini development. You're still looking at maybe thirty million bump in the grand list. And with the motor vehicle bump that we just had of fourteen point three. Uh you can see how little that impacted the mill rate. So even with Santini coming on full on, it's not a. It's not some huge. Push on that on the overall grand list, just just so you know, it's not. Like a huge, it it's a big number, but at the same time, you could see how little. Motor vehicle at fourteen million move that mill rate. That's all.
Thanks, Jason. That makes sense.
Counselor Gudicak.
Um, thank you. I just, I, as far as um the unsigned fund balance. Not three hundred, I believe it's five hundred thousand, right? Because we're. Shifted to two hundred thousand.
Yeah, the total total amount, I believe, this actually kind of goes to Council Queen's point. It's just three hundred thousand dollars, which I think. This is advisable in small quantities. You can use a little bit of quick balance to balance your budget. Is gonna go in and then there's an additional two hundred twenty-six thousand manager's proposed budget, which will help pay for one-time capital expenditures. Uh we're proposing to change that up a little bit for the pitch, but still like total five hundred twenty-six thousand. Yeah.
Yeah, there's a capital expenditure in there that was specifically from.
I just want to make sure it wasn't just three hundreds.
Yeah, yeah, three hundred municipal tax stabilization, you know, right? And that's the max we can use from that. And then two hundred twenty-seven thousand from. On a side, but you know, what what I'll call it. Right, yeah, okay.
And maybe I'll I'll just. Jump in here, that's okay. Give my two cents on the motion on board. I'll do two things actually, because it's just a convenient. So I know we had a lot of good residents comment with capital items. You know, which was a good conversation. I think it's it's always good to um look at every part of our budget. Uh but one of the nice things. You know, that. Are good diligent, good financial management is we are paying for capital of unassigned fund balance this year. Um or it's being boughted. So it's it's um. And luckily our interest rate. As a proportion of our debt is not overwhelming, which is definitely not a good situation you want to be in. So. Fortunately, it's not gonna move the needle whole line. You could cut it all out and it's not going to like. Change it, change everything financially, but at least we are in a situation where we don't need to worry about being pushed by our debt as a town. So that was point one. Point two, I'll say I support uh Council Gudicak's plan. I think. This is a good uh proposal to put out to voters. I think this is a tough year. They all agree it's a tough year, I think. We're kind of at a point where we need to see what residents say, right? We've got. You know, a if challenging year for Board of Education, of course. Um we've come up with some solutions to help mitigate that. Um but at the end of the day, it's still still a decent. Tax increase for our residents. So I think I'm willing to push push this out. And I'll I'll support it at referendum. And I'll I'll support it at referendum and, you know, we'll, we'll listen to what what the voters say at the end of the day. So I think it's good. Um, I I would prefer to keep fund balance where it is right now. I I think that's that's good. Uh, but I I like what is mentioned.
Like the lot of Chris's questions, one of the questions I asked, because that's what I was pushing on to Chris, but it's. Refer to the same question, like, and the same thing that you said is, well, we didn't use it last.
Yep.
Yeah, so that's.
Yep.
Even though I didn't really articulate that well, but those were the like points I was trying to hit. So.
Yep.
But yeah.
Any other questions, councilors, comments or thoughts?
I have, I have one, um, it it's related, but it's not. Really about the the numbers first. I I know in the past, we've talked about adding a question and it's done, been done in years past. They added a question to the ballot about if you vote no, or I think it was kind of done on the side, like it was a separate ballot. Merrily seems to remember us doing this around two thousand seven.
It was a long time ago.
That if you vote no, i- is it because it's too high or too low? I think this is one of those years that. We've got a lot of different opinions and I think what we ran into last year as we're discussing things is. If it's, everything is just speculative, like why did people vote no? It could be a mix of one way or another. And we're just sitting here kind of throwing out things blindly to see if it stuck. Um, is that something that we could possibly explore doing to kind of help if it does not pass? And I'm hoping it does pass. Could we throw that out there so that the town council would have a little bit more guidance as far as? Why people voted no?
So I think we could say that too, item seven, which is approval of the resolution, which is actually likely to be sent to the voters. So it's a little odd how we do this. Um, because there's a item six, approval of a budget resolution, which, correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, but I think that's where we actually approved the numbers. Budget. And then there is another item and uh agenda item seven, we start talking about. The actual language that goes out to ballot. So I would recommend this.
Talk about it, can you do that?
Correct.
Okay, let's do that.
And you got it.
Yeah, so I'm gonna throw this out there. I would like to see us even make. A little, so I, first of all, I'm in favor of everything you said. I'm in favor of what's on the table. I'm in favor of Council Ute checks um modifications. I would like to know if we can even look at some additional items from the capital budget. And um defer um deferred item, and I would suggest the roadside mower because it is a two thousand and ten model. Roadside mowing is important, but it's not as maybe important as providing, as removing that from the budget and giving that cushion, more cushion to the taxpayers. Um, and then we had talked about, um, and I understand the the issue of the the basketball courts. Um, and maybe we could, maybe we could do like one a year, which would probably give us another couple hundred thousand dollars. I'd like to see us try to target another half million dollars in savings for the taxpayers. Um, and maybe that's not five hundred now that you've already proposed sixty. Um, is that my under, with the sixty that you said off the capital budget?
Sixty.
It's for, it's for, it ends up sort of.
It's always a wash. Okay, so it's a wash. Okay.
Yeah.
So so that would be something that I would like to throw out there and see what you all have to say about that. I think. Given the whole wonky tariff situation right now, any equipment that we go to purchase in the coming year, we're gonna blow this budget anyway. Because the parts don't come from, you know, the the machines and the parts don't come from this country completely. And we're gonna be subject to some some real weird pricing. So. We, some of the things I I agree shouldn't be deferred. Um, I'm, as someone who works in the construction industry, I'm a huge fan. And I nurse along in nineteen seventy four John Dear backhoe, so I know exactly what it's like to like have to nurse an old machine along. Um, but the, so I like, I'm in favor of keeping our fleet up to date. Because it's overall less costly in the long run. But if we could, if we could defer this expenditure and and for another year. We could basically give the taxpayers that relief now and then see what we were looking at next year. And prices might even be more stable next year than they will be when they go to purchases here.
So you're you're just kind of asking a clarifying question. So you would recommend that we would just explore if there's other items that we could pay for in cash. Essentially out of our assigned fund balances add.
No, 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 I would just say, so I would just say for the, so I I.
Oh, defer.
I've got a, I've got a fiscal year, twenty twenty six capital budget highlights. And I would say, for there's a capital project and it's a capital equipment total of seven hundred thirty seven, nine hundred eighty dollars. There's a non-referendum debt funding of uh five hundred eighty two thousand for the replacement of the roadside mower for three hundred. Basically five thousand dollars. And I'm wondering if we can delay that and not spend that money in this budget. And then further reduce the mill rate, right? Further reduce the budget.
I think that's bonded, right? So it doesn't impact.
Yeah.
That's accurate.
Yes.
Already?
Yeah.
Yeah, none of that would blow.
Okay, yeah, can I just add something? Uh, yes.
Yeah, so I agree with you. I was asking that same question, but have not having pushed that needle, I don't think, and I think we've seen this with VPW. I don't think that they're replacing it for a couple or like a new leather seat. I think that fifteen year age on that mower is, it's to the point where it's. Not gonna be a service. And my only apprehension would be like the middle of July. It's gone and it's, you know, it starts looking like Jurassic Park out here. That was what my thinking was and I I. I think a planned purchase with a machine like that is better than like a quick emergency purchase. That was my thinking with it. Especially.
Keep in mind, please, if I, okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
So this is, this is, it's a better part of the five year plan. And part of our triple A bond rating is having steady plan on what our capital uh projects are. And keeping that steady, not pushing things out so things start to bubble up and down. The roadside mower is in non-reform debt, so that will not help us um at all. We did move the the seats, I believe, out and and switch some other things around, but there's, there's not a ton there to be found. In general fund. That's what you'd have to concentrate on. You know, the other funds like ambulance fund and they're very specific um as to what what we what we need. And and keep in mind, for those that don't know, we went over this capital plan very publicly. It's available on our website on February twenty six. I don't want any new equipment. I hate buying equipment, as you guys know, as uh I hate buying large apparatus. Uh, and and I fight um my directors on it constantly. Uh, but at the same time, it becomes irresponsible to keep pushing it out. Uh, and a bit reckless. It's not like we just threw this on here. It's been there for five years. We have things five years out. Sure, things bubble up. And then we have to shuffle it around. Uh, but it's a fairly steady plan. It's not like uh the big gain. And keep in mind that we have other things we have in buying a truck. We can't just take a used truck. Uh, and and do certain things to it. We have safety standards that we have to meet.
Under, understood. I understand that.
I wasn't talking, I'm sorry, Merrily, I was, I was trying to address some of the things I heard. So go go on, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, I agree with you. I mean, and and like, I I agree with you, I agree with that, and I agree that over the long run, it's more cost effective. To purchase something, keep it up, keep it up to working standard and not have to constantly, because you're, you're paying for downtime too, if something breaks down. So some with some of things like our plow trucks or like, you know, some of our more major equipment. Like you have a plow truck break down in the middle of winter time, that's a, that's a. Then it's all kinds of problems and all kinds of additional expense. So what I was looking for is our other things that we might be able to. To not do at this point specifically because this year is so bad. And that way we could, we could show good faith to the taxpayers that we were, we were willing to listen to some of what they said and kind of. And and we, you know, reduce that burden on them. And also, this was interesting based on Yolita's spreadsheet. But correspondingly, because the the burden has shifted right from commercial to residential. The other thing that this shows, which I think is attractive for, that I would see is attractive for businesses, it shows. A fairly decent reduction for the commercial, for the business side, like we're looking at like a nineteen percent reduction right now. Um, so that's, right? So that was, that was illuminating for me.
Oh, could you explain that thoroughly?
So because the valuation, and this is goes to the, the, this goes to the differential between the value jump. For residential property versus the lower value cost for uh the lower value um increase for commercial business. Um, and some of it I totally understand, like brick and mortar office buildings, right? Or not, people aren't working it from home. So say you had a property and your property didn't, um, it stayed the same, the value of it stayed the same. Under our original proposal, your tax bill would be reduced by like twenty five percent. And so what we're seeing is that while residential property values increased anywhere from like. You know, twenty to almost fifty percent and and correspondingly, we have double digit tax increases. Commercial properties increased a tiny bit with the, with the rare exception, with rare exceptions, they increased a tiny bit. So you have, so big Y is gonna pay less taxes next year. Um, all of our, all ever sources is gonna pay less taxes next.
There's a silver lining with that.
Pardon me?
There's a silver lining with that?
Tracking. It's 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 applying for the, for me as a taxpayer, right? I I don't necessarily like it. But it's, but if I'm looking at it from a commercial standpoint, which we talked about making the town, you know, like stoling our commercial. Advantage, right? That's a, that's like we reduced our mill rate. Values being what they are, right on the highway, and now your tax burden just went way down.
Got it.
Right? Like every property pretty much along one ninety five with rare exceptions went down significantly.
But if I can just jump in, I I I I uh completely agree with what Merrily's saying and trying to explore all ways we can get. You know, to to help our residents as best we can in a, in a, in a year that we all know is difficult, right? Um, and I think, you know, I think, I think asking these questions and and having these conversations is. Showing the town that we're doing our due diligence to make sure we're trying to uncover all of those stones. Um, and I think with, you know, Colleen's uh that motion and her proposal, I think, um, we have tried to explore all of those things. Um, and so, uh, so, yeah, no, I think it was, I think it's a good conversation, but I also uh understand sort of where we are. But I think it was good that, you know, we, I mean, we've been doing this budget process for, you know, months now. Um, but I think it's good that we ask these questions because we want to make sure that we're we're um helping out our tactic with best here. So, um, I appreciate the conversation. Thank you.
Uh, any other discussion from councilors? Right, um, I guess you can go and and do a vote. I think it should, I'll vote. I'll just go around the board sheet here. Uh, Council Butler? Council Gudin?
Hi.
Council Gudicheck?
Hi.
Uh, Council Moran?
Hi.
Council Shay?
Hey.
Council Bibi?
Hi.
I'm an I as well, so that motion does pass, uh, since one. Um, so item six, the agenda has been completed. Now we'll go to item seven, approval of a resolution. Authorizing the form of a ballot. I'm gonna ask Sarah that, a little confused as to how this typically worked. Do you need to draft it in with all the numbers and everything, or how does this uh?
So you'll, I'm sorry, that's, Yolita has a copy of that um resolution. And she will fill in the numbers for us. I don't know, are you prepared to give those, Yolita?
Yeah, so I have a question before um before, you know, next item, just to confirm. So we are moving recreation, a part time, full time position, fifteen thousand. To be funded through recreational fund, correct? So that's gonna be from the town manager's line item. And I can share my screen if that's helpful. I think maybe we'll do that. Um. Uh, just so I. I have this straight. Let me see, which one? I think this one. Let me know when you guys, when you can see it, please.
Yes.
All right. So on the left side, you can see the proposed budget, right? This is what we propose, the manager proposed. These are the increases and I highlight this, this is one because I was working with something. And on the this side, what I did, I basically um listened what he was saying. And I'm saying, okay, so we're gonna take fifteen thousand for the uh. Part time moving to full time position from recreation, we're gonna fund the recreational fund, not general fund. And then my understanding was that we would be taking sixty thousand from the C E P. Projects in the capital that's funded through general fund and fund. Uh, the consultant, right, to support fire department consultant recommendation. So that's gonna move to town line item. Because that's where we're gonna charge the expense. Make sense? Any questions? Okay, so what's gonna happen? Because we moved this fifteen out of the budget, right? It's gonna decrease our or your proposed council budget by fifteen thousand. Make sense? Any questions?
I think you're good as someone. Yeah. But.
So that's the bottom line, right? Because we taking this out and we funding through recreation fund.
Yep.
The sixty is just gonna be washed between the line items. So this is what we're looking as the final number to be in a ballot.
Did you just walk me through? The, how, what the the changes that we did, uh, that Council Gudicheck mentioned that, that, that. The Board of Ed, you know, we're talking about for use of money and then the, I don't know, swapping the 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 um. Seats for the, for the edu, uh, the electronics is just sort of a wash, but hasn't that impact?
Okay.
But that's a wash, uh, about the use of money, hasn't that attacked budget?
So I have prepared the table one. And the the left side is the proposed budget. That this is what the managers proposed. So when we talked about thirty thousand uh use from the utility fund, from a sign one uh B O E fund balance. And then we did talk about C E P project, replacing uh replacing the. Replacing the the seats to the technology offset, right? So the only thing what we need to do or I need to do in a capital plan, just change it uh description. Put the budget in, put the paperwork, all that. So it won't change that part. With the utility fund, right, it won't change our budget. And I'll I'll walk you through the mechanics behind it, what what happens in financial piece. But overall, just understand, everyone understands, by doing these two swaps, right? We are kind of increasing their budget, right? So now instead giving two point nine nine, technically we're giving four point one percent to education. And we're not talking, and I'm I'm not talking about, I'm just overall saying, so the proposal was seven point four three. We're giving four point one, so it's still reduction what they ask, but this is like, this is what the overall they getting. Um, to offset their budget. Make sense? I'm gonna walk the mechanics now. So I know everybody kind of confused, how does it work? Why are we not adding revenues in utility for utility fund to offset that three hundred? Like, why not? We not think, why it's not the expenditure decreased by three hundred, right? The offset. Because this is a internal utility fund. So this is what happened. At the table two. Every year that the budget is developed, um, town in B O E has specific budget for utilities. Electricity, water, diesel, and we transfer that, those funds to utility fund. For the scenario that we giving the um, giving this three hundred thousand from to use to utility fund. From utility fund, what's gonna happen? B O E, let's say they have a utility budget for six hundred thousand that in their operational budget. But what they're gonna transfer technically to utility fund, only three hundred. And then the other three hundred is gonna be offsetting by in utility fund sitting assigned fund balance. So technically, they will get paid for all six hundred thousand. The only difference is that they're gonna be transferring only three hundred thousand from their operating budget. In general fund. What's gonna happen, um, they will have additional three hundred thousand dollars in operational budget. That we can utilize for other areas that superintendent has in mind to offset what we, what they would not provided. Any questions?
No, but I understand. Thank you, Yolita. I'll just add, I I do think it's obviously. No, but I understand, thank you, Yolita. I'll just add, I I do think it's obviously inappropriate use of that of that money. I think that's exactly what it's designed for. But I understand what you're saying, the mechanics of how it, how it works in the budget, so thank you.
Yes, the only thing what I was gonna say, and I made this red. In deliberations, I will need uh council approvals of use of these funds. So I would need that official, you know, um voting probably, and I'm not very familiar. The process, but I would need approval from council to use utility fund to offset three hundred thousand. Of a B O E uh utility budget.
You're, I I think it would be part of the motion, or are you saying we need to do a separate motion to just as a formality?
We don't know, we don't know, so so maybe to be on the safe side, a separate motion might be a a good idea, or, you know. Make sure you somehow get it on record that you approve it.
Yes.
We're just saying, it would be a motion to use the three hundred thousand from the U S F. You know, as per the budget or whatever, that's what you're saying?
Yes, it would be from the assigned worth of education fund balance. In the U S F fund. And assigned. Fun, B O E fund balance.
Starting to wonder, like, look, I think we agreed to it, it's not a.
Yeah, no, it's not. I've just heard, yeah.
Yeah, but I don't know. I agree, I think to be on the safe side, it should be voted on at some point by the council, but I don't know.
I mean, I. Is it up to be done tonight, or can we just make a motion?
That's that's kind of what I'm trying to get at.
My preference is that we would do it tonight because it's intertwined with the budget.
You could offer a clarifying motion. You could offer a motion to clarify the. The details of the.
But it's the motion.
Budget we just voted on.
Yeah, but.
Motion's passed.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I guess what it. Well, I don't think I've heard a clarifying motion. Councillor Bibi, could you?
You can do an amended motion, but we've already voted now.
Already voted, right, so you have to, you have to basically then, oh man, that's messy, yeah. Uh, so. So you could make a a motion to. Based on the, based on the vote that we just took, right? Based on the on the items that were just discussed. And and the the uh dollar amounts that were that were discussed, that we want to, that we're stipulating. That there, that of this, three hundred thousand dollars from U S F will be used. From this for that.
We can make an addendum to the vote that we just.
I don't, it would, it would have to be a separate motion because. We already, we already voted. We'd have to undo our vote to and then.
So can I just make a motion to use the money?
Yeah.
In U S F or in whatever. It, in accordance with the budget that we just adopted, right? Yes, so.
Sarah, but so I think.
Yeah, she seemed like she was giving me a positive nod, so um. Felt like I was moving in the right direction. I don't wanna hit the conflict here.
Yes, we need a separate motion.
Okay.
And also, just to add. I'm sorry, I don't wanna interrupt, just to add also for the project, because we just switching the projects, what are we doing? Four hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars. I think if you can include that, that would be great. Because now the project titled.
I amend the motion, I amend the motion to use. The three hundred thousand from U S F and swap out the uh capital improvement projects on board side, the. Seats for the tech initiative as per the adopted motion.
Second.
Alright, any discussion from council?
Please, do you need clarifying language?
Second, second.
Okay, I'll.
Sure, I can definitely try. Um, so the motion is to use three hundred thousand. From U S F, utility fund, uh, and. Wah, uh, transfer, make it sound good, um. Transfer, that's it, um, the uh auditorium seats. Project for the uh uh ed tech initiative. In accordance with the budget we just adopted. Thanks, Lisa.
Alright.
So let's go back to the bottom before we move forward.
We have a vote.
We have a vote on it. So sorry, Yolita. We'll we'll resolve this very quickly. I don't think there's gonna, is anybody have any discussion about this?
No.
Great. Councillor Butler.
Hi.
Councillor Newton.
Hi.
Councillor Gudicke. Uh councillor Moran.
Hi.
Councillor Shay.
Hi.
Councillor Bibi.
Hi.
I'm an I as well, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. So just go back to this final like table, right? So again, the only change you will see, it's gonna be dec- decrease fifteen thousand on the town line. And that the de- will decrease our total budget by fifteen thousand. Is that correct, right? So we're just moving, we just, we just moving that that request, that position to be funded through recreation fund, and then we just.
Uh, yes.
Wrapping this.
That's accurate. I believe.
So overall increase on the budget is three point zero one versus three point zero three.
Any questions? Just, just certification, so the fifteen thousand, which is the only impact, reduced. The percent increase from three dot oh three to three dot oh one?
Yeah, it doesn't look right.
So is that also because of the motor vehicle change you made?
No, no, let me see.
Oh, right, right, right.
Well, it did fifteen decrease, but then we have a sixty thousand increase, remember? Because we moved, right? We moved from C E P from capital, right? That's my understanding, because we wanna do consultant, which is would be an expense under fire department.
Yeah.
Correct?
All, the these lines swap. This goes out of operating budget, comes out of a fund.
Right.
But because sixty thousand that moved to the town line, it's gonna make the town go up that line. Go to three point twelve, but. The sixty thousand didn't move from some other fund, it just moved from a capital improvement line. To the town, so it doesn't.
I think what you're saying is it it dropped lower than you thought.
Yeah, it dropped much lower than I thought, and if you're increasing the town expense by a net of forty-five, why did it drop down? Why does the percent change drop? In total, in total, not the three dot one two, but the three dot oh one.
Well, because of the fifteen, right?
Yeah, so fifteen had that creative an impact, though it just seems odd out of a sixty-five million dollar budget, that sixty-five thousand. That much, but maybe it does.
Cause it's oh three, I guess it's oh three.
Oh, zero three, got it.
Okay, so that's the difference then. Two, two eight versus.
So it's just, it's a rounding thing.
Yeah.
Six thousand five hundred dollars is point zero one percent. So, yeah.
So it doesn't affect it.
Yeah, it does.
Wow, okay.
Alright, thank you.
We good?
Yeah, thanks for checking.
Perfect. Because I have to prepare that, all it's so I wanna make sure there is no questions.
Yeah.
Okay.
That, to us, I think it'd be good reference. But not, not right now, but at some. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm not looking at this.
Just a clarifying question, if I may. So she's gonna print those numbers and then go back to us?
No, I think she just has to put them into the motion for the the wording of the budget question.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
You did a great job, by the way.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. Was easy work with you guys.
Oh, I'm sure.
Can surprise me. Thank you, alright, um.
Do we wanna have a conversation about adding that question also about like?
But that's the next item, I think.
Aren't we on that?
Yeah, yeah, we're on item seven now, uh. Approval of a resolution authorized in the form of the ballot, um. Does Yolita need to run that number, those numbers first, so we can look at it? Is that, I was.
You can approve the motion.
Or the wording.
The numbers to be.
Yeah.
In accordance with the uh past, yeah, like we just did with that other.
You don't need to plug the numbers in to pass that motion, right?
Okay, maybe we could, uh. I don't know if anybody has that, can you maybe just look at it?
Well, with that, you want the floor? Can she share it on the screen?
Yeah. The resolution authorized. Ballot, yeah, I guess.
We're still talking about Jen's question, right?
Yeah, do we have like, do we have an image of the ballot that we're even voting on?
So, um, I would have to clarify with Kathy on Monday, our town clerk, um. My best understanding is that there's two options. It's been done before that they put an exit poll question on the annual ballot. It's also been done where the voter gets handed a separate piece of paper. With an exit poll question. Um, I don't know the rule for a budget referendum. I know for, say, a presidential election, you're not allowed to put an exit poll question on the ballot. So I have to clarify with her on Monday. The other issue to consider. We're getting these tabulators, and they will be up and running in time for this election. Because of that, the printing of the ballots.
Can I make a suggestion?
Going to have a couple extra steps to share, and they're gonna take. It's gonna take a little longer. I don't know if adding a question to that is going to complicate that process.
Could I? If we, we were going to do this, could we make a motion, do it, and then? You know, our preference would be to have it on the ba- ballot, but in the alternative. We do it on the paper, like, okay, so we can do what, we can have an alternative if it's not feasible to put it on the ballot.
My, my question for that is, if there is like a, if a question like too high, too low, there has to be an other, right?
No, I think in the past, how they.
Cause if you don't have your question to answer. Like, you know, it, like, say if it was. Um.
Like, I don't, I'm upset that this wasn't funded, but not necessarily that I.
Right.
It's Tuesday, and I never vote yes on Tuesdays, that kind of thing.
We can have another, there could be another.
There has to be, though, right?
So you you'd be saying like other, but there's no specification, so so you have three options, yes, no, other, or I'm sorry, high.
I think the last time there was a question like that was my first year that I was able to vote for, and that was with Romney. And there was something in the local for. Like a rodent.
And didn't you get like, but didn't you get like, there's a separate slip of paper? It wasn't.
I think it was added to the, to the ballot, but it was yes, no, and then like, well, why not?
Okay.
The yes or no.
So we could.
Unless, I could be wrong, but I think that's fair.
It is. You wanna be careful with exit poll questions because people also have the option of writing a novel. On the piece of paper as to why they're voting, whichever way they're voting. That can potentially interfere with the tabulator reading the ballot. So a separate piece of paper. May be a more optimal.
It it, and I think.
Choice.
And maybe that's the motion, right? It's just like, if the.
Recommendations.
The clerk's officer, whoever it is, right, like, is to do it that way, then we'll follow whatever their recommendation.
So I think I got this. I'm gonna make a motion to have an exit poll. If, please, I'm gonna have to paraphrase, but. If vote no, then why too high, too low? On the ballot, but in the alternative, if the town clerk, it's what the writing division, town clerk. Finds that process not to be feasible, then we have an exit poll on paper, by paper. That's the decision, okay, that's it, that's my motion.
Second.
We'll just need the exact language you want to say on that. Poll, we just have to get that in a minute.
Okay. I need a pen. Um, thank you. Supreme Court clerk, please. Help me out here with the language. So you want the exact language of the question? If.
If you voted no.
If you voted no.
Was it because?
To say, was the budget, was the, was.
If you voted no, please state the reason.
Vote and no, was it because polling, too high?
Too low.
Too low.
Yep.
I mean, if if you were to put a thin line encouraging other, then it's really not a lot of room for paragraph. But like, I don't know if that would just, not that we wanted to sway you from talking, but.
We cut the paper very narrow, so that. Yep.
Yes.
Not that I'm an expert at that, but I believe from fifteen years ago, that's what I remember.
Okay.
No, I think Alex had it.
Here, and so I can amend if they think there's.
That's.
Better option. Um, so the exact language for the question would be, if you voted no, comma, please indicate the reason. Polling, budget too high, budget too low, other, and then a, we're gonna have a line.
Sounds great.
A line next to other.
Yeah, oh yeah, oh, I see, it's like a.
This, this.
People using like a two font.
And if if those are, just so you know, if those are on the paper, like we're stepping. They'll have to be hand-captured, which is, you know, it's not a good process.
Okay.
So we might have referendum results on pass fail, but you might not have your exit poll results immediately.
I think that's, well, I'll just give my perspective, I think it's okay because that's helpful to, if it fails, hopefully doesn't, but if it did. We don't need to know that that night, right? Like, we need to know it the next time we're.
That with um Brenda in April and find out how that, that will work.
Okay.
I mean, it can absolutely be done, I just, I don't wanna speak to it. Um. Um, but it will obviously have to be, that's not something that can be read through a tabulator, you know.
And then can volunteers help the best start do that?
Oh, they love. Okay, she may, she might have to call a couple of workers in like the next day to do. I'm just gonna have to ask, I'll find out.
That's, yeah, understood.
But that has to be admitted. That has to be a vetted job.
Yeah, they're not like taking people off the string.
No, I'm, I'm, you know. Help someone in their reliance.
Asking all the questions here.
Not if, it's on piece of paper. A significant number of people declined to vote.
That's correct.
Right, last time we did this, it wasn't a one-on-one, we had a vote, and when we tallied up the slips of paper. It, certain people just were like, I'm not.
Sure, sure, it's like taking a sticker, not everybody loves it.
Yeah, which is.
So you hope that the majority do decide to give input, but.
It can show you hopefully a trend, but it it can't count for everybody.
It's better than nothing.
I agree, I I think that the small thing is that might be misleading. Like, I look at it as a recipe, right? Like Jen added too much vanilla extract, and it's too sweet, but it's, that's not really what happened. It could have been like too much sugar. That's my only apprehension with it, yeah.
We didn't know, we didn't, we really didn't know, because there was so much turmoil. Like, which way to go, right? We, I was sitting watching meetings, and it was like, we have to understand what the voters were thinking.
You mean last year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Definitely got her, though. Yeah, I did.
The motion kind of makes it cold and stays, we voted no, please indicate the reason, budget too high, budget too low, other, with a middle line after the other.
Yes. I think that's accurate.
Lisa, you're so good.
I know.
You're amazing, always amazing.
Wait, so second? Yeah, second, I think there was a motion, I think.
I motioned, yes, you seconded?
Yes.
Okay.
Clarifying question.
You wanna know the length of the line? No, just kidding.
Are you also motioning to approve the actual ballot?
Yes.
Okay, that's insufficient.
Thank you. Or I think you made the motion?
I made the motion.
You're good with that?
Yeah.
And I even go with second.
Yeah. We're both good.
Fantastic. Um, the discussion, the additional discussion on this. Now, I'll just say, I I am a little concerned about, you know, if there's a response to the raise or anything like that, like you mentioned, um, you know. Whatever the will of council is, since, you know, it is what it is, but I am a little concerned about that.
Yeah.
But.
I think give it a shot, if it doesn't work, then it doesn't work, but I think it's at least a step in the right direction of having some sort of idea, yeah.
You agree with that really? Like, are you worried? Do you have the experience?
I I do, because, and I think Sarah Beth probably remembers this too. I mean, the the worst, I mean, the the pieces of paper that we filled out were not even a half a sheet, right? It was like a third of a, it was a really small sheet of paper. And the the worst case scenario is, we go and we print these things and and we have three thousand little sheets of paper that we throw in the garbage, or, you know, they, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily work, but it can be illuminating in that it can, you can say, I think the people, the voters were telling us this, but if they're really willing to fill this out, then we can, it's like, we did identify a trend at at one of the last ones, cause it was, it was a case where I I think we really didn't know whether we should go up a little bit, or keep going down a little bit, or what we were doing. And it it guided the next decision that we made, which eventually ended in in a past referendum, so. Okay, you know, it's.
Keep in mind too, that you'll get a lot of like, you know, why did I vote no? Because Mickey Mouse wasn't.
Might get, yeah, a small percentage of, a certain percentage of people that just. But you get, we get that, you know, okay, so throw it out. We haven't done it in a long time, it's not, exit polling questions can be useful, if they're done, if they're done right.
It's it's come up from the public in the last few drop, right? It may, you guys might find it really.
It just gives us something when we have, I think, that's quite a fact.
Good way of starting it up.
Right? Well, I think, just, we'll go around and vote, uh, Counselor Buckler.
Aye.
Counselor Noonan. Counselor Utecheck.
Aye.
Counselor Moran.
Aye.
Counselor Shay.
Aye.
Counselor Beebe.
Aye.
I'm gonna stay, but then we'll do those packs. I think that brings us to our final item, which is a German, is there any um, objection to a German? No objection, we are adjourned at eleven thirty nine.
Thank you, everybody.
It's still Thursday.
I know, nice job.
Thanks.
Was that from the public here?
Thank you, guys.
Well, last year, we ran to the next day.